Hello. Good evening Wakefield. I call this meeting of May 8th to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, attendance. All seven of the councilors are here today. Going on to item four, public engagement. Madam Clerk, anyone for public engagement?
I do not have anybody tonight for public engagement.
Okay, great. And there is no one in the studio. We will go on to item five, engineering update. Town Administrator Mayo must have been nice to let you guys go so early in the agenda today.
I appreciate that.
Something went well.
When I make them stay, you guys overrule me.
I heard we had a sweet spot in the chair, so she wanted to get us in and out.
Right. So, good evening, folks. So Bill Renaud, Town Engineer, joined by the Director of Public Works, Joe Conway, here to provide you some input and some updates on what we've been up to for the last year and what we're going to be doing this year. So I think we were supposed to have the PowerPoint here on this screen. I don't know if that's happening.
It is behind me.
Is it? Do I gotta do? Is that gonna, is that coming?
Yeah.
Well, I'll start. I guess I can start. So I'll start a little bit about what we do in engineering. All right, I got it over here now. So there we go. So, you know, kind of our overall responsibility. So, you know, the Engineering Division is responsible for the planning, designing, bidding, construction oversight for all work that happens within the Public Rights Way. That includes our roadways, our sidewalks, bridges, dams, water and sewer utilities, drainage and culverts, traffic signals, and then all private work for tie-ins for private properties. In the last year alone, we had about 163 permits last year for folks looking to either tie-in to the town's utilities or a need to see construction oversight for drainage projects. So that's one of the pieces that we start with. We're also responsible for technical assistance to the town departments and town boards. At the zoning board alone, we had about 34 applications between site plans and just standard applications, as well as one definitive subdivision that we reviewed and provided comments for. We also are responsible for giving guidance and reviews for building permits that include certain drainage components to it and overseeing those projects as well. Aside from those, we're also responsible for managing the town's compliance with our NFT's MS4 permit. We've talked about that, I think, in the past, but essentially it has a series of minimal control measures that the town's supposed to do to ensure that we're compliant with federal regulations. Part of that, and really the updates that we've done over the last year, included private construction oversight for erosion and drainage projects. We had six of those specifically. Continued weather and dry weather outfall testing. That included areas around the lake as well as other high priority areas for us to look at. We also are responsible for doing GIS system mapping to submit up to EPA, public outreach, and then certain reports that were required in our year five permit. Besides that, we also maintain town records and do asset management through our GIS system for roadway and sidewalk conditions, sewer water and drain infrastructure, our sign database for all. That helps us with our traffic rules and orders that come to the council, as well as our ADA transition plan. That all falls within the Engineering Division office. So we're structured. I report to Joe Conway as the Public Works Director. Beneath me, we have three senior civil engineers, two of which are PEs as well as myself. We also have a GIS manager that reports. And again, she handles most of our data records and that type of thing. And then we have support staff below that, an entry-level associate engineer, which was hired last year, as well as an administrative assistant who we're in the process of negotiating with to come on board for, it's currently vacant, and then our operations manager/construction inspector, who inspects most of these projects along with the engineers. So I wanted to start a little bit with some of the accomplishments we had last year in 2022, because I've heard a lot of questions about roads, so I have a lot of information here on roads today. But starting with the first part of what we completed last year. We completed 3.3 miles of roadway reconstruction in calendar year '22, as well as 3.2 miles of sidewalk reconstruction. That also included ADA ramps, about 62 of those, which is about probably triple of what has been completed to date, you know, prior to 2022 to be compliant to ADA standards. So pretty important accomplishments and a lot of work that the staff was responsible for keeping track of. Aside from those, we also had water main reconstruction on North Ave, Lowell Street, Old Main Street, and Salem Street. And we also did the Molton Field Fit Court. So we were responsible for kind of laying that project out, as well as doing kind of a master plan to make sure it fit with future improvements for Molton Playground. And then we also completed the Vets Field Pickleball and Floral Way project. So you can see from the photos on the slide, we have the, you know, kind of the wildflower area that we did where we paved, the gravel section that was requested through our Historic Commission, and then the actual pickleball court, as that was being painted back in '22. So besides that, so one of the big things before I jump into this year's work is we initiated last year an interactive construction viewer, basically to highlight all the projects that we're working on. So we've categorized those into three stages. We have our planning stage when we start to look at individual projects. And, you know, before, we're looking to design those, we have to plan out and scope out projects. So that's our initial planning phase. We have a design phase where we go into actually the design work. At that point, we're typically looking to residents and having scheduled meetings to discuss the projects and gain feedback so we can incorporate those into our bids. And then we have our construction phase, which is all kind of highlighted here. So you can see in the yellow, those are projects that we have planned. And this is basically jobs that we're looking to do in upcoming years. The blue are projects that are currently being designed. And then the reddish, kind of brownish color is projects that are planned for construction. So let's look at our workload this year. So for calendar '23, we're looking to either, as part of our group, we do a lot of internal design, construction, inspection, and contract administration. That's something that's very unique that we do here in Wakefield that you won't see in many other communities. So we're responsible for, right now, about $15 million of new construction work. And keep in mind, all of that is actual construction, not contract administration for consultants that are doing the work. We typically, we will manage probably 75% to 80% of the work internally and design and construct those. That's something, you know, like I said, is very unique to Wakefield. I did something similar to this in my old job. And, you know, our staff, we have a talented staff that actually has the ability to keep this. So we're not paying money to have other engineers design this. So you'll see typically, in many other communities, 30% to 40% of budgets and construction budgets will be towards, you know, design, design work, whether it's studies or whatever it may be. We do, still do those. I'm not going to say we don't, but they're much more limited compared to what you would see in another community. So kind of to go through these individually, so I tried to keep this at a 10,000-foot view rather than diving into each individual project with a ton of detail. But I figured I'll give you a quick overview of kind of where we are. For the first two, the roads program, I have separate slides for those, so I'll outline those in a couple of minutes. But we're in the process right now of looking at our water main construction. So last year we bid a water main, a water main project where we started on Salem Street. So between Lowell and Sullivan Playground, we completed reconstruction of the water main in that stretch. We have the remaining sections of Salem from Sullivan to Navliss Way. That's planned for construction this year, as well as Cedar Street, Eaton Street, Houston Street, White Circle, and Salem Street. All of those, all of those areas have been designed, contractors awarded. There was delays in material last year that pushed us back into calendar '23. And that's going to be a common theme in some of our work that we're talking about this year. Trailhead work, so if you recall, when National Grid competed their work for the Rail to Trail and paving that section, there were big gaps that were left right at the, right at the streets. That was done because we don't have an agreement from MBTA to actually use the trail yet. So what we did is we went out and received a $200,000 grant to perform the work. So we've designed and bid the project, and that work begins in all likelihood early next week. We've signed contracts today or tomorrow. If we didn't do it today, it's tomorrow. And we'll be moving forward with that project. We're expecting that to be about a 45- to 60-day construction timeframe. In the meantime, while that's going on, Tom and I are working with MBTA to finalize the agreements to allow that to open up. So our goal is for the sections of trail that have been constructed to be open and usable by July at the latest August. So that's where we stand on Trailheads. North Ave Multimodal Improvements, that project has been designed and is in bid right now. Bid phase right now. We'll receive bids on that on Friday. Our goal is to have construction begin within the next few months. And I'm expecting it realistically to start probably after July 4th, so that, you know, obviously with it being part of the parade route, we don't want to start digging up sections of the road. We would only allow them to do segments so that it would be boxed up and completed prior to, you know, prior to the parade. So that's where North Ave stands at this point. Butler Ave remediation is a project that we're working with our LSP to finalize a capping plan for the, for the area that has been contaminated. I'm taking the lead on design of the, basically the final treatment. So we're looking at a small little trail that we'll go through. We have to leave this as passive recreation. That's what DEP has told us what they want to see. And working with our Conservation Commission, they gave us some ideas of what they'd like to see this look like. One of the big things is that, you know, there's a bunch of trees that are on the site today. All of those have to be removed in order to actually cap the area that's contaminated. So as part of that, we will install this new trail system of wildflower meadows, similar to what we did at Floral Way. And then we'll have some areas that are for different types of pollinators. We'll have special gardens that are created too with some interpretive signage, so people know what's, why these were planted. We're also going to be looking at a conservation restriction in all likelihood for the portions where the landfill is, because that was something that was asked for by the DEP during that initial planning phase. So I'm actually taking the lead on that one. And we're in, I'm probably about 90% done with the design at this point. And I'm expecting our permit filing to be in the next couple of weeks. So we'll hear probably in June or so, be presenting that to the commission. And I'm hopeful we can close that fairly quickly and move that on to the phase, the next to middle to DEP to actually get construction started by hopefully the fall. Besides that, we have drainage improvements. This was an item that came to the council back, geez, I want to say, in the, probably in the fall of last year. We were looking at Vernon Street and replacement of a cross-country drain line. We've identified a lining process that would be much less invasive to the neighbors. So we're advancing that project right now. I'm waiting on pricing for that drainage project, and that would be hopefully a summer project to be completed and finalized. We've also included as part of that same treatment, a culvert on Preston Street that is in need of repair as well. So drainage improvements, that was an article that was approved last year in Fall Town Meeting, and we'll be moving forward with that project. We have the Vets Field Parking Lot and Bathroom. And that was ARPA project that the council was generous to provide to move that project forward. And it also includes the parking lot reconstruction to include new stormwater treatment for discharges going to Lake Q. I have hired a consultant to assist with the bathroom design. That's not my wheelhouse, surprisingly, so I don't do bathrooms. But we will, we've had a couple of initial kickoff meetings, and we'd be looking at some public outreach, probably in the next month, month and a half or so, is what we'd like to start with. And then ideally, construction of the pad for the, for the foundation, in the foundation for the bathroom to be installed in the parking lot work to happen this fall. The lead time on the building itself is closer to about 10 months, so it looks like it'd be more of a spring/summer, you know, completion for that project. But that's where that stands today. And then we have our 2023 Sidewalk Program, which is in our planning phase right now. That was a project that was also an Opera Fund project. Survey has been completed on that project, and we're moving forward with design in the next month or so. So as soon as our roads programs are completed, we'll be moving on to the sidewalk program. My goal would be to have that started in earnest by the fall of this year. Some of it will sling into 2024 as well. And then our Greenwood, Green, and Oak Shared Streets project. So we looked at that as an opportunity for a realignment. There's a little sketch in the upper right-hand corner of the slide that shows essentially kind of eliminating that expanse of pavement and turning it into a three-way stop sign. We've had some public outreach out there with the residents. Initially, we were looking at a roundabout. We did not get a lot of support for that part of that alternative, so we've moved to a three-way stop sign configuration. So we'll be looking to deploy a kind of a temporary measure, so folks will understand the new alignments and make sure that that will work prior to us moving forward and getting funding from either Complete Streets or Shared Streets this year.
If I could interject, I said I was only going to play color commentary tonight. But two things, I just didn't want to get lost in this whole process. So, one, Bill had mentioned the amount of ADA ramps that were installed. And one of the things that I can honestly say is, for a period of time, you'd see those get installed and they literally went nowhere. The sidewalks died. For whatever reason, there were gaps and things like that. Now, everyone that gets installed either serves a purpose to cross somebody across the street, fills in a gap. There's no more sidewalk, you know, that intentionally ends. You know, it might end and ask you to go across the street, but it's not just out there on an island by itself. And if I could take one second just to throw a thank you out there. So $15 million in new capital construction is obviously a huge investment. We're thrilled that the council is supportive of us in everything we do. But I just wanted to take one second and thank the council and Mr. Mayo, because before any of this could happen, we had to make a pretty big human capital investment in our engineering group. And you've all been very supportive of that. We've been able to do that. Some of the things that Bill's group has been fantastic at is getting grants for the town of Wakefield. The reason why we are so competitive and it's so hard for these awarding authorities to turn us down is because when we submit a grant application, we're shovel-ready, ready to go. So we're designed, we have the plan set, we've asked the questions, we're ready to hit the ground running. So I just wanted to get that in there for my two seconds of fame here tonight. But thank you all very much, and thank you, Steve, really, because without that, I mean, an office of two people, you know, I worked in engineering for a period of time, there were three of us in there. It was a busy place, and, you know, you were selling tickets, lighting tamer, and the popcorn, you know, so there was everything going on. But now, I mean, we have a really robust program where the responsibilities are ironclad, and we're able to get a lot done. So thank you all.
So some of the consultant projects. So we do bring on consultants to assist us. One of the big ones is Harts Hill Water Tank. So that project has been awarded to West Construction. We have a kickoff meeting with those folks this week.
Thursday.
Thursday, yep. So Thursday this week to start discussions on schedules for Harts Hill. That's a big project for us, as well as the water main that will go to it. As you know, we've had a series of bricks. So schedules to be determined on that one, but that is moving forward. Our II program is in year six this year for investment in lining our sewers, eliminating inflow and infiltration. So basically, that lowers the amount of money that we have to pay to the MWRA by reducing the amount of flow within it. That's one piece. And then we also, you know, we also get this funded through new development that comes in. So we have a calculation that requires them to submit, you know, a payment for this to happen, as well as money from MWRA that essentially funds this project annually. So we're looking at year six to, it's in current design right now with construction starting within the summer. Envision Wakefield, so here's a couple of the more enjoyable ones. So Envision Wakefield, the north and middle sections, if you recall from our meetings a couple of years ago, are now on the MPPO's fiscal '28 tip. So as we were talking before, we weren't, we were not included within the tip for the last few years. We were able to get that on the tip this year. So that is the out year. So they do essentially a rolling five-year tip. So we were able to get in on fiscal '28. We're moving forward with the 25% design in earnest now, so we've extended the contract for VHB to get that work completed. And we will be discussing, you know, the 25% to PSNE phases as a future discussion for funding. But design was pretty close to 25% design, so we have a requirement for a 25% design hearing to submit to MAST DOT. They come out and make sure that the public is all on board with the project. So that is something that's happening within, probably within the summer, late summer, early fall, is what we're targeting right now for public outreach and final design for that. Our downtown multimodal improvement, so we repackage part of the Rail to Trail and sections of the Envision Project, so the Water Street section and the South Main section, were repackage as a separate program, and that was included on the STIP. So by splitting these up into two smaller digestible projects, we were able to get it on the State's Transportation Improvement Program. So that is funded in fiscal '26. You may recall that we had the Rail to Trail itself on there when we were kind of in partnership with Linfield. The communities decided to kind of take care of their own sections. As part of that, we were able to leverage Water Street and South Main Street as part of funding for the STIP. So that has, that will be, you know, started a couple of years prior to the downtown proper. Our townwide bicycle and pedestrian plan is in final stages. We're, Shared Streets Working Group right now has a draft. We have a draft, we're providing comments. That will be presented as a public meeting, provide before coming, before the council. There was a lot of public comments that we received. We're going to explain to the folks that we did address the comments that we heard. There were significant ones, I thought, from the public, so we'll take a step back, have the public look at the final plan before it comes to the council for adoption. That should be coming within the next two months to you. So we have a June planned meeting, and hopefully the second June meeting of the council will be here, hopefully with a final bicycle and pedestrian plan. The Broadway Signal improvements have been, are still ongoing. MBTA elected not to be the sponsoring agency for the project, which delayed us a little bit in getting the earmark available for funding. So I've gone through the MAST DOT project process for initiating projects, and that is on their, they have an internal plan review meeting that the project's going to be discussed at. At that point, it would be added to the tip to allow us to get at the money and start our design of the Broadway Signal Quad Gate enhancements. Our Farm Area Drainage Study, so that's a project that is somewhat new. So we're looking at the Farm Street area. As we heard through our review of the Metro Tech, there's a lot of flooding problems in that whole area. Ultimately, it all goes to our high school culvert, so we want to make sure that that's being sized properly for any future improvements that we want to do. Obviously, with the timetable of the, of the high school, we don't want to impact that in any way, so this project's moving and grooving. And then our last one is the Water Street Bridge. So we're looking at the replacement of the Water Street Bridge. We had a consultant come through and make recommendations on several bridges in town, whether it's rehabilitation or replacement. Our Water Street Bridge has passed its useful life. This is the bridge by Cataldo, the former ambulance area. So that bridge has reached its useful life. We're looking at a replacement. We are going after design funds through the Small Bridge Program, and that's, that has been submitted to MAST DOT last week. We're looking at about, I believe, like an $80,000 to $100,000 grant request. Hopefully, that comes through. If it does, then we will be moving forward with the design of that, and then eventually another grant through the Small Bridge Program to have the construction done. So stay tuned on that one. That's a, that's a new one that is, as of the last couple of weeks, that we started moving on that. So that's kind of our current workload. I pulled off our roads program. So I mentioned before that we had some projects that were happening from '22, 2022, that have kind of continued to hold over. So we had some curbing lead time problems where we couldn't get curbing for several streets that we had within our program. So all the streets that you see on the list there, there's about two miles or so of streets, have some type of curbing on it, which is why we couldn't move forward with the construction in 2022. All that curbing has been ordered and is in, and is in hand. So we are starting to move forward with construction of several streets, you know, within our 2022 plan. That is going to start with drainage, sidewalk, and curbing install late May through June. And then we're going to be moving into pavement milling and paving between June and July of this year, with a final paving to be completed between August and September. So all of the streets that are on there have been discussed at some point. Some of these are included from our, from the National Grid paving work. As you recall, we negotiated a payment for that work so that we could, so that we could better dovetail the drainage work, water work, and other utility work that were needed within those streets, as well as some of the sidewalk and ADA work that was required. So that's where we are. So this year, we'll be starting with two miles of last year's roads program work, and then moving into this year's roads program work, which includes about three miles. We have about five total miles of roadway reconstruction for this year. Good chunk of these are going to be on arterials, so I think that most of the folks that have been having concerns on our roads, this should start to address a lot of those concerns. So you'll see a lot of work on the streets this year. So we are finalizing design right now for a June bid opening, and then we're looking in July, July to November of this year for construction, and some of that will go into April and July of next year as well. But the list of the roads are on the, on the, on the screen. That will include Broadway, Salem, Vernon Street, and Lowell. So a lot of our more arterials and collectors will be, will be taken care of within this year. So we'll have, like I said, about five miles worth of total paving work to happen this year. And I know I went over my time, so I'm happy to answer any questions on, that you may have on our current workload.
Thank you so much. Director Conway, anything to add?
No. Like I said, I got my, I got my two pieces, and I think Bill was very thorough.
Great, that's great. Steve, anything you want to add before?
No. I think that the Engineering Department is very busy. They do a fabulous job, and I can call Bill and Joe, and I shouldn't say I can, I have, I will. I call him, call them 24/7, weekends and everything, and they're journeying on the spot every time. So I appreciate their help in all of these, all of these matters. And they are busy. And as I've said before, many times about roads, you know, people are concerned about their condition. They're concerned when you're going through the construction process, and there'll be a lot of concerns this summer. So I ask the public to bear with us, because there are going to be, you know, it is going to be slow and grinding, no pun intended, through there. And then afterwards, people will be driving too fast. So we'll have all other issues to deal with at that point. So it's been a long time coming, and I do appreciate the public's patience with this. We did kind of change our philosophy. Instead of just, you know, grinding it and putting down a new road, we made sure, you know, last few years, all the underground utilities are done. The sidewalks are in, the curbing is in, and it's a much better project in the long run, and saves money in the long run. It's just kind of tough going through it. So thank you, guys.
I will say, you know, my favorite joke is in New England, you have two seasons, that winter and construction. And that is definitely true. I will say, I think the, Bill and Joe, I think the slides with the roads program slide of what you're expecting to do this summer would be great to get on our website. Like separately, I just looked, and there's nothing, you know, I think just seeing that and knowing what the summer's going to look like, it would actually help us to, dealing with questions. And I saw Councilor Smith Galvin was taking lots of notes, so.
No, it's, all of these are great. And I know that I've worked with you on different ones. We're super excited about the Greenwood, Green, Oak. I think that's going to be a huge improvement. And you didn't mention it's also going to result in more green space too, because there's so much cement there now. I just had a couple of questions. I really appreciate the database. It's great to go to. I was just doing it on here. I sometimes forget it's there and pick up the phone instead of looking at it. Is there a way on that to just say last updated? I think...
It's constantly updated.
Is it constant? Okay, so we can be pretty confident that what's up there is the latest?
Yep. So if you click on a street, so if I just jump back to it, so you can see the main area that has, you know, kind of the different projects. If you click on any of those segments of lines, it'll bop up to a window and tell you, basically, the project and what it's part of. As soon as you click on that link...
The view more, right?
Yep. As soon as you view more, it comes up with a detail that lays out not only the project overview of what's going to happen on that street.
Yep.
It also talks about who your contact is, who the contractor is, has a copy of the plans out of there, and then also what program that is part of. So whether it's roads, whether So whether it's roads, whether it's water, why we're doing it. So you have all of that laid out, and then as updates are happening during construction, we have a schedule that is on there that's linked, and then what happens is it's is it's updated, it goes across all of the different projects that.
Okay, so that's great. We have very high confidence in it. Okay. So I know you mentioned the Molton Playground. Are we still on track? I says this is development of bid documents for winter 2022, 23. We're still on track for that? I get questions about the hockey, the potential hockey right there.
It'd be 23. It's 23.
23 now, yeah.
Yeah, so we we have a layout of the entire of the entire project. We have developed the plan. We need to go after grant funding for that. So that's really where that stands. And then but we would also be looking at additional funding to do the basketball court over, and then there was a bocce court as well. So we have the layout of that whole, you know, kind of master plan that we did. So we would need some additional funding for that. So that would be something for, you know, potentially a Fall Town meeting or, you know, obviously, we have a lot of priorities, so it's kind of prioritizing the priorities.
Okay, so two quick.
But I want to do that project.
I'm assuming, I have to ask it every time, right? I'm assuming Grafton Street's still off the table.
It is. It is. We don't have we don't have a way to construct it without flooding out flooding out Melrose, and we won't be able to get permitted for it.
Okay. And my final question is, it's really great to hear that Butler Ave is is moving forward. You said with 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 construction to start, my understanding is, is I don't think there's any construction planned there. Is that correct?
Oh, yeah, there is. Oh, of course there is. Yeah, so we have to so we have to cap the land.
Oh, right, but not construction of like houses.
No, 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 no. No, 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 no. That's going to be a second phase. That's a second phase that we'll have to talk about.
We'll know what we have available when the law gets approved and then have to go through that.
And then it'll come back to Town Council to decide when it goes on that piece of land.
Yeah, but I'm hoping by fall that we can start that. I don't expect it to be a pretty labor intensive project. So we're going to be putting essentially two feet of soil cap on top as well as a membrane. So that's the work, and then they spray the wildflowers. Those will pop, hopefully, and then we'll have other planting areas and then that trail.
That's great. It's a beautiful area.
It'll be, I think it'll be a very cool area to to kind of sit and hang out.
Having just taken the open space survey and not knowing where hardly any of the open spaces were, no, I mean, that was one I knew of. So so I think we have a lot of little hidden gems like that in town. Okay, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilor Dabrowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Joe and Bill and your entire team, because the DPW, being the liaison, I could say firsthand, like, I see how hard you work on so many different projects, and there's so many different balls up there at any given time, and I think you do a great job with it. I I did want to highlight Pleasant Street because that was a that's a very impressive project, and anyone who hasn't been there should check it out because that's a good example of the kind of workmanship that that gets gets done by our our DPW. And I know there's been a lot of discussion about Salem in particular. I know I've spoken a lot, Bill, to you about Salem, and we all understand that Salem is not in good condition currently. There are a number of reasons why there have been, you know, the delays that we've had and mostly to get it right with the water main, as you explained. I think it's also important to point out that we are that that there's reclaiming going on there, meaning we're going right, as I understand it, right down to the gravel.
The whole road will be, yes, up to so between Lowell and Navalus Way, that whole section will be reclaimed completely.
Right, and I think that that's important.
It's a brand new road.
So for so people, so I mean, you can explain better than I, but that basically means like found from the foundation all the way up. So it's not just you're not just like kind of like milling at the top layer where it's going right down to make sure that's done properly.
So what we're doing is we're going to grind down to the soil that's below. We're going to reconstruct the soil, then we're going to put in two new layers of asphalt. We have curbing that will be going in. We have sidewalks that will be upgraded, gaps that are missing, and those will be installed, so all of that is part of it.
Drainage.
Drainage as well, yeah. So we're starting the first the section where the water main was installed last year. That will be reconstructed and started. That's starting within May, probably late May is what I'm being told, for drainage to go in in sections that needed drainage improvements, and then the road will be reclaimed and ground up, and we put the first layer of asphalt down. Once all the other streets are done, they'll come in and do the top course with everything else. They're going to come in to do basically all the topping at once, and that'll be sometime in August or so. That's kind of what my my schedule laid out.
But I think it's really important for people to understand what what's involved with this project because by doing it that way, we're looking at making a long term investment. So like going forward, we're not just because we could pave a lot of a lot more miles but not do it properly. And what you're doing between drainage, I know Salem had, I think, some flat spots even where it would be a real issue if you didn't do that, but also just make sure we're doing it properly. And so now, foundationally, we're going to be in a much better place. So in the years to come, this is an investment now that will pay dividends going forward vis a vis, you know, less expensive maintenance going forward.
Yeah, especially on this street because, you know, we've had so many utility cuts. Right now, your road that's there is just a series of different utility patches. So we have gas that's been gone in there, obviously, the National Grid work that's gone on. We're doing the water main now. There are sections where this drainage is being done, so there's just no road left. So that's why we're we're doing it that way.
And for people who are familiar with with that area, too, I think you had said it was from like basically, since like Sullivan Park to Montrose will be really kind of done curbing in May, first layer of pavement.
First layer of asphalt, yeah. First layer of asphalt will be.
In June.
Will be June, yes.
June. And then once the the additional water main work is done, then the remainder of that is.
They'll finish the reclaiming of the rest of it if they can get to that this year, but that's a big if with the water main. There's that is a sizable project. So if everything lines up, we can get it done this fall. If not, the remainder would be next year, but we're hoping to get it all done this year. So that's part of that's part of our 2023 construction bid.
Right.
That the remaining section.
And just to remind people to, and I know obviously the Envision, you know, project has been a project for years with, you know, that's been very exciting, and it's great to be on 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 the list now. Keep in mind, too, that fiscal '28, we're going into fiscal '24 because we're always kind of like basically as of July 1, we'll be in fiscal '24. So I'll say worst case scenario, we're we're four fiscal years out from that. Better case scenario is some other projects are not shovel ready, and we can move up on the list, right?
That is the goal, yes. And that's something that we're definitely looking at, including both both sections of it. So we have a fiscal '26 for the rail trail section and then water and in Southern Maine sections. We're on fiscal '26. If we can get it fiscal '25, we'll be, you know, we're going in earnest on the construction, I mean, on the design, rather. So that's we're ready to 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 move that up if we can. So we're working on it as we speak, reviewing plans with the the design engineer. So that is that's something that's going to happen.
Because I think that's something that's very exciting, and from, you know, having worked with with you both and your departments on this, I think a lot of people don't realize that we are unique in that we're we are shovel ready with so much and that we have our plans ready to go. Like you said, a lot of other communities do not do that. So they might get on the list, on the five year list, but then they're not ready to go, you know, when their number is called. So then you just then we have opportunities basically to move up along that. So I'm really excited about that. I think there's going to be tremendous, you know, impact that these projects are going to make. So thank you for all your work on that.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Chines.
Thank you. And a couple of questions. I actually first want to kind of piggyback off of Councilor Dabrowski's question. You know, as we, when you talk about us being on the 2028 tip in the 2026 STIP, I mean, is that, I mean, is that sort of approval that we can kind of take to the bank in terms of getting funding for those projects? Is that a we hope to be on those lists? I just want to make sure I understand the expectations of what that means.
I wouldn't take it to the I wouldn't say take it to the bank. So what it becomes is who's shovel ready and ready to go. Right now, there's a lot of there are not a lot of projects that are on the tip currently. So there are some that are that are have increased in costs, different pieces, reasons why that that it's not, I wouldn't say fully built out as it typically is. Our goal is each year to demonstrate that we're closer and that we're moving forward and we're making progress. You know, I'll typically go to the MPO meetings. I may ask a counselor to come on or the chair to assist and say, you know, we're ready. Typically, we do that if it if it slides off and somebody replaces it. Back in my Concord days, we had that happen a couple of times. We had a very, very large project that we were keeping on there that became kind of a, I would say, a target pretty consistently. I wouldn't envision, no pun intended, these, I had to, these these projects being, you know, a target necessarily because they're not, they're in kind of the typical tip size now, and that's why we wanted to set them into two different projects. It makes them more digestible at the MPO level. So but if there's a change, we will you'll be the first to know, and I'll be asking for some support, you know, obviously, from.
I mean, I think it probably goes without saying that, you know, sort of all of us at the table would support, you know, getting those things moved forward as in any way we can. But I just want to make sure I understood that. So where, you know, the these are sort of target dates, but they're they're not set in stone one way or the other. It could be forward or backward.
Right, so typically, I wouldn't want to start pushing for funding for future phases of design until we had a placement on the tip somewhere. So that's why we're getting to that now. We haven't, we don't have any money beyond the 25% design phase because we weren't on the tip. So, you know, typically, and you'll see most communities do it the same way, is that they're going to wait to be on the tip before they start spending more design funds, and the MPO was talking about it on the last one that I was on, saying that, you know, if we could get more projects on. So, you know, I feel good that we're we're in a good spot right now, so we just need to move forward with the project. You know, we'll have our 25% design hearing. That's a big, that is probably the biggest hurdle in these projects is to get to that 25% design hearing. So, you know, we're looking at that in the fall of this year, I believe. You know, VHB will be working on a bunch of different things over between now and, you know, say, in August, September to kind of get ready for that and and be ready for hopefully a the town to bless the project and say, let's move forward with the project as constituted. So, I mean, we've done so much outreach, I think, on this project. I don't think there's any, I'm not expecting there to be any any major pushback on any of it. I think it's pretty much the same project that we've seen to date, a couple of tweaks maybe around how we configure the the shared use path around the rockery. I think that's the only thing that I've looked at that didn't really make sense to me, but everything else is pretty much the same as what you saw.
Okay, great. Shifting gears a little bit, sidewalks. So I my assumption is when you talk about the road program that, you know, certainly any roads that have sidewalks or any major roads, the construction project includes sidewalks. What are other sidewalk priorities as we look at construction for '23 and '24?
Well, so we received a million, a million dollars in ARPA funds. So those projects were essentially what our priorities were and what we heard as as projects that that folks wanted have been identified, and they'll be, you know, anyone that's not on a roads program street will be bid as a separate standalone bid. So we're starting the 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 design of those projects within the next, probably within the next two to three weeks.
Okay, and if I remember, that included like Nahant and Elm and.
Nahant, Elm, Parker, all of those are in there.
Myrtle Ave.
Myrtle Ave is in there, yeah. Yep, so there's a whole handful of them that, you know, different pieces that were, you know, gaps that were missing to get people around to different locations.
A lot of it was that situation where you walked so far and then the sidewalk just kind of died.
Yeah. So it's. Well, I'm very I'm very familiar with the ones near near Parker and Elm, just given my my kids walk to school routes and given the Girl Scouts that have spoken to us over the years.
Lowell being is another one that we heard, too. So that's going to be funded as so Lowell is actually planned for for paving.
Great.
So the stretch where we would be adding the sidewalks is in the queue for for paving, so that's part of our 2023 roads program. So that'll be included as part of that project.
Great, thank you very much.
Sure.
Didn't we have, just to follow up on Councilor Chines' question, Councilor Smith Galvin, didn't we work with somebody from the state about sidewalks walking to all the schools? I remember a presentation. Was that part of of your prioritization?
And his team was very involved in that.
Saferoots to school, I actually go on those on those meetings.
Great.
So I'm there, I'm discussing what we've heard for priorities. We try to make sure that all of the planning documents are all kind of consistent with what the town's looking to do. So, you know, and and so we get feedback from them on what they think is a priority. It's included within their saferoots to school document, and then we advance that. You know, obviously, it's helpful for me to go after grants, too, having that in there, so that's one of the reasons we do it and one of the reasons I'm sitting on most of those. But I think the only one that we have that hasn't been funded is a section on Parker is the only, not the the stretch past Elm, the the there's a little, there's a little gap.
When you go to the underpass under 128?
No, that's that's on the plan right now. So that's getting funded. It's the stretch closer to closer to the Walton with a little side drive with a, yeah, with a roadway, the side road is to get in there.
It has a weird stop sign and he's got a crosswalk.
Yes, and that's all strange. So, yep, so that was something that was new. We were already talking about ARPA funds, so I hadn't heard about that project. I looked at it, and so that's something we'll be looking at in the future. You'll you'll hear for that.
I was having an update from TAC on that, too.
Yep, and that'll be a priority project.
Great. It's it's nice to hear when all these committees and and work aren't done in siloed so that it actually like falls together really nicely. Councilor McLean.
Bill, did you say a million dollars for sidewalks? That didn't sound exactly right to me. I don't know if I.
I believe it was, wasn't it?
It was an ARPA.
ARPA.
One of the ARPA allotments that was.
I thought there was a million for rail trail designs, Steve.
There was a million for rail trail design.
And a million for sidewalks.
And a million for sidewalks, okay. So do you have a miles amount? You said you did three and three miles on roads and sidewalks. You said we have about five, five miles of roads in play. Would that be for fiscal '23?
So five miles is is the the leftover work from our '22 bid, and then the '23 bid is that's the total of the five miles. So we have three that's currently in design that'll be bid within the month, and then we have from last year what's left over, we have 02 miles of that. And then sidewalk wise, we're looking at, if I had the number off the top of my head, I want to say it was about 1.3, 1.4 mile miles, somewhere around there.
So a little bit less than the prior.
Yeah, so curbs curb costs have gone up. So projects that haven't been bid, we're seeing a huge increase in curb costs. So it's gone up about 300%. If I was talking to you three years ago, I'm 300% higher on curb. So so that's a that obviously impacts our ability to get some of it done. But everything we've talked about to date is still basically funded at this point.
Okay, and in terms of tips and steps?
Tips and steps.
I got lost a little bit.
There you go, sure, yeah, yeah.
But that's not uncommon. However, I'm curious, the million dollars towards rail trail, since we do do our own design and we're talking about potentially getting funding through tips, steps, whatever, could you explain what the million dollars for rail rail trail would encompass and what the what and when the spend might be?
Right, so that so the 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 rail to trail project, they're now, we've now turned at the downtown multimodal project, right? So so includes the rail to trail, Water Street, and in that Southern Maine, South Maine area. That's all going to be done through a consultant. So this is a good example of the the dollars that we save. Typically, if we were to design that, if all of our projects were being designed, you'd[1572.16] see about 10% of the cost going towards design cost. That can escalate even up to 13, 14% depending on the, on the consultant. So we have about a 10 to 12 million dollar project and we're spending a million dollars in design costs to make that happen. So that's a project that I'm not taking on. We already had a consultant that was on board when I started, so that's one of the reasons we're not, I'm not, I'm not taking it on.
And will we potentially spend the amount we need to spend during the period that ARPA wants us to spend it?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
One thing, it was 1.1 million for sidewalks.
Okay.
1.1, here we go.
Great, thanks for the question.
Just a little trivia to that, so we went through at least a decade of not funding new sidewalk construction at all. So we are, our foot is on the gas to make up for some, some sins of the past for sure in that regard.
Good, good to hear.
Councilor Danahue?
Thank you. So this is great, getting an overview of your office and what you do, and it sounds like you are doing a lot and are super, super busy. I know we see you come in here and there for different things, but to get that overview, can you tell me a little bit about the evolution of your office? Like, how many engineers did you have and how did it expand? And then what did that expansion allow you to do in terms of the cost benefit analysis of adding?
Oh, definitely, yeah, yeah. So, so when I started, we had two senior engineers, we had a GIS manager and a construction inspector. So since I've been there, we've added one engineer. So just to be clear, we had a stormwater manager initially that would handle just our NIPD's program alone. So what ended up happening is I absorbed that position when that person left the town. That became a senior engineer, so we hired a PE to take over that role, not necessarily just the stormwater. They do the design of all the other projects as well and assist me with some of the NIPD's work. And then we hired an administrative assistant in the last two years to help us with the management of all the contracts and keeping track of all of our finances. Obviously, there's a lot of finances going on. And then we had an entry level engineer added as a new position last year?
Two years ago.
Two years ago, two years ago. So it was kind of, we, we hired them or him probably about, what, 15, 16 months ago maybe now?
Relatively.
Yeah, relatively, about that, so. And so if you're looking at kind of the, the savings, I guess that's the question. So to give you an idea, when I started here, the engineering division was typically pushing out about, I'd probably say, three quarters of a million, maybe a million dollars worth of work. This year, we're looking at 15 million dollars worth of work. So that's the difference. So while we're spending maybe, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars on salary, you know, we're able to absorb a lot of the design work so that you're not spending money on, on design permitting and various other projects. So, you know, and I would say if you look at the, the money that, that my group has brought to the town, you know, we've had a $2 million grant for Mass Works to do the water main on, on, on North Ave as well as the shared use path. That's all covered through that $2 million grant funds that we received. We've been able to leverage the Cabot Cabin Enforce Project for improvements in, on Lake, on Quinapaw Parkway. We've also been able to identify several earmarks that we've received. So that's the 1.3 for the, the quad gates on Broadway as well as other earmarks that we're looking for on Main Street for kind of including a multimodal section, you know, by the lake. So all of those projects, that's what you get is that extra money and then the ability to get all this work done at a premium savings. That gets to be actual work in the town as opposed to going to a consultant to design it.
And then plus the grant, the grant writing that you just referenced is that, who does the grant writing?
I, we, it's a kind of a combination of a few, so it depends on who's in the office, but typically it goes through me. I'll tag in, you know, one or two of the senior engineers depending on the project. And, you know, basically they'll kind of give me a rough draft and then I'll take it from there to the, to the finish line. I also work with Erin at town as well. So we tag team a lot of different projects as well. And she helps me with, well, I should say, we kind of help each other. We work kind of in tandem on some of the grants that we go after.
Excellent. Would you say that before you were able to kind of expand your department, that you were, weren't able to pursue grant opportunities?
Yeah, we really didn't have, yeah, I mean, the, the work was really just kind of keeping the status quo going is really when my first year that I got here. And then, you know, as we've been able to bring on, you know, some, some of the folks that we have, I mean, we have some, some very talented folks. We, you're not going to find many engineering departments or divisions that have three professional engineers. We have three of us that are there, so that helps a ton. We have a third that, I should say a fourth that will be getting his this year. If he's watching this, he better, make sure he better get on that by the fall.
You've committed him now.
Yeah, yeah, so, but it's a, it's a, it's a very good group and, you know, a tremendous team and I'm lucky to have everyone. They just, the, the amount of work that they produce, I mean, 15 million dollars of construction this year and they'll be able to manage that pretty successfully. You're not going to find that, I don't think, in many other municipalities.
Well, I'm glad that we were able to support that expansion, so that's great.
Thank you every day for that.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's outstanding.
And I have another question for you is that with the master plan that's in the process of being developed and what is your role in terms of working with the implementation?
So Erin and I do work together on many planning initiatives. So the bike and ped plan would be one. There's a transportation segment of that and so my office reviews that. We provided feedback basically on what we're doing, how we manage different components of it. You know, really it's focused on roads, sidewalks, you know, walkability, bikability, all that type of stuff. So, you know, we plug in and make sure that the projects are consistent with what, you know, we're reviewing and it makes sense. The bike and ped plan's been a big piece of that. We spent a lot of time on it and I don't, I'm sure you all know that.
Yeah.
Maybe too much time, but we're going to get a really good end product. That's the key and something that's, that we can implement. I think that's the most important piece, you know, when I'm reviewing it, I'm making sure that we can actually build these things, not just put it on a shelf and it's a plan that sits there and holds up a, you know, a bookshelf. That's not what we do.
Yeah, no, that's great, that's great, because that's really important. It's good to have all these designs and ideas, but it's the actual implementation and it must be, it must be an interesting endeavor in your office because you have these, I don't know, do you end up with these plans that are like, this is great and then the implementation is like, well, it's not really feasible sometimes and.
Well, that's why we plug in on the planning process.
Yeah.
So that we don't get that.
That's great, that's great.
We don't want that to happen. So, you know, our goal is that we're trying to advance most of these projects to some type of conceptual or preliminary design phase so that we are, we're basically plugged in and ready to go after grants or funding opportunities. So we're, that's, that's really what the, the folks do. We take those documents and then we advance these projects so that they're ready for the next opportunity.
And I think it'll be great with the new position, the Director of Strategic Growth and Development, that that'll be another, another building block or opportunity to work with, with the planning process.
Yeah, another, definitely, I mean, the more, the more folks that, that can assist us is, that would be terrific.
Yeah, so that's good. Okay, now my final question is, thank you for the Greenwood, the Greenwood, Green and Oak Street because I go through there a lot. I'm just really, I don't know, I don't know, it's like.
It's confusing going through it.
It's a little confusing going through it. Fortunately, there have been no accidents with me, so. But the roads, I don't notice any roads in the near foreseeable future in Greenwood.
Nope, that's all in fiscal 25.
Okay, okay.
So they're, they're coming.
They're coming, they're coming.
Yeah, we, we try to lump most of the streets together because we get better pricing from the contractor. If they're bopping all around town, they lose money. So if we can lump areas together, similar says like, we don't want to pave one street and then the street right next to it is at the same condition.
Yeah.
That doesn't, I mean, you know, you're picking and choosing one neighbor over or one street over another. That's not what we want to do. We want to do a neighborhood and try to focus on doing neighborhoods as best we can.
And I understand the, I understand the idea of the utilities underground and the curb, sidewalks and curbs, that makes perfect sense to me, but, and I think you've answered this question before and I'm so sorry to ask you again, but people ask me all the time. When's my street going to get, how do you prioritize?
So we, so we do a couple of things. So if you recall, we went after the, the $10 million bond for roadway, that was about now two years ago? Two years ago? Is that sound right? Two and a half years ago?
Just before COVID.
Yeah, just before COVID.
Actually, the, the town meeting got pushed to the end of June.
Yes, yes, I remember that, yeah.
So, so as part of that, what we did is we do a townwide survey and inventory of all the streets, looking at conditions and then how they're going to degrade over time. And we make recommendations on how, how much money we need annually to get them up to state of good repair. So state of good repair is a certain, you know, number on the, there's a couple, in the, in the industry, there's a couple of terms, either surface condition or they'll do pavement condition index, different, different terms. So you want to essentially get up to like a gentleman's B is what I would say. It's a, you know, you're trying to get up to an 80 PSI and that's kind of the goal. So if we can get to that point, you know, our roads are in good shape and we're doing more maintenance than full reconstructions like we're doing on Salem Street because that, we don't want to be doing that because we're spending a lot of money on that. But unfortunately, sometimes you have to. So, so we look at a couple of things. So we take that, that, you know, that value. We also take the cost to do the project and then we take a factor of the number of folks that use the street. And then what we call that is that, that formula ends up being what we call a benefit value index.
Yeah.
And then we use that benefit value index and go basically through the streets that way. So we try not to, you know, but what we'll do is is once we have that initial, that initial list, we're going to look at the streets that are right next to it. Are they in the common, you know, common condition? Then we would potentially push one street out and add the, the street next to it in because they're in the same condition.
Okay, great, that's super helpful, thank you. I, I think that's all, I think that, those are all of my questions, but thank you for all of the work that you're doing and it's great having you here.
Oh, great, thank you for having us.
Councilor Vincent?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I live just off of Pleasant Street, so I got a chance firsthand to see the professionalism of the work that you all did in that area, Pleasant Street, Cordis, the professionalism of your staff. And I would just let the two of you know that in every one of my duty stations, whether it was domestic, overseas or onboard ship, I dealt extensively with engineers and the public works officers. And you two are two of the most impressive people that I met. When I compare them to the naval officers that I served with for 26 years, I just think you two do outstanding work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Looking forward to continue that for a very long time.
Very much so.
I guess we're going around to Councilor McLean?
Yeah, just one quick question. We have committed significant ARPA funds to the lake. Could you give us an update on with the CCNF project probably moving forward?
Yep.
Whether those will be likely put to good use in the near future?
Definitely, so the project, so the, the lake cleanup work that we did, so that was the, the Vets Field parking lot and then the drainage that comes through that. So that will all be, there'll be a new, you know, treatment system that will be put in, you know, kind of a, a online kind of retrofit project that'll happen as we reconstruct the parking lot and do all of that as one project, plus the installation of the new bathroom down in that general area.
Is there more coming with the CCF project?
With the CCF project, there's, there's plenty of it, yeah. So we identified a bunch of downfall, you know, kind of treatment within Quinapaw Parkway. So that will also include a new shared use path as well. And then CCF, CCNF also included 1.3 million in drainage improvements. So that project is essentially going to be all of Main Street. So we've identified and I'd say past conceptual, probably closer to preliminary design, we've completed through the lion's share of that to take all the outfalls basically from the lower common to, I want to say.
Carriage lane.
Carriage lane. All of those will be either, will be consolidated and treated before they discharge to the lake.
And some of the ARPA funds will be used over there as well?
They're not being used at this point.
They're not?
No, that's all going to be in the, the Vets Field area. So this, so the ARPA funds will cover the Vets Field area mainly. And then CCNF funds and potentially earmark funds would, would cover the remaining section on Main Street.
Well, that'll correct is the pre-existing condition, basically the water hits the street. It's the catch basin right onto the lake.
We're trying to keep the affluent out of the lake.
Absolutely. Now, for a very elementary understanding, it essentially goes through a coffee filter, filters out some of the yuck and then hopefully that'll reduce the algal blooms and continue to be.
And, and, and so we have a ton of nutrient removal that we're looking at. So we found some retrofit technology that we're going to be looking to employ in sections plus standard technology that we've used, so.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Madam Chair.
So I'm just going to take chair prerogative since I have Director Conway here. Just two things, you will be leaving, but next on our agenda is the parade. If we can do any cosmetic, nice looks to the parade route, it would be much appreciated. Crosswalks and stuff.
So believe it or not, line painting started last week.
Perfect.
And as fate would have it, it poured. But the highway department will be out tonight and all night this week. They'll be starting, they usually start in the business districts and work out. I was told before I left work today, they're going to start in the square tonight. So all that'll be going, but typically from about the second week of June up until July 4th, it's North Ave, Main Street, downtown, everything off of it. And then we continue the rest of the summer everywhere else.
I love it. I'm, I'm, I'm surprised at how the red crosswalks just don't stay very long. So the one particularly in Greenwood and the one by Farmland does not last. If it's done every year, does not last very long, so.
So I mentioned last year, Bill and I have been talking about it, the differences in the crosswalks that we've had. One of the troubles that we ran into was we used to use a lot of green. Green has now become what delineates bike lanes, so we kind of had some conflicting paint schemes out there. But that's one of the things that is on the board to bring to the council for a design palette to say, there's a methodology why we want to do what we want to do. You know, and come up with some rhyme or reason why we may be a little bit more decorative and we might not be. So the envision process that we'll be going through will play into that because I'm sure downtown will have some aesthetics that are a little bit fancier than what you might see off the beaten path, but we just want to try to develop a level of consistency.
Yep.
So that's some uniformity and it doesn't look like it was just kind of ad hoc. So we've been trying to combat that, but I agree with you completely that the, the paint does not seem to last very well, so.
It doesn't, yeah.
If we're going to choose an inlay like that, we'd probably go to something a little bit more rigid. A good example is like at the end of Main Street at Lowell Street, some time ago they installed brick inlays. It's not brick, it's a synthetic, but those have stood the test of time and I can tell you, we are not easy on them in the wintertime and they're still there. So that's definitely something that is going to be a future conversation and consideration and then based on some input and the guidance of the council, we will get that on our wings too and.
That is great, and I'm just, I'm just checking, it does not look like there's any rain in the forecast for the next couple of days.
No, 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 I had to look myself before I jinxed everything by saying that tonight, but yes.
And that, and I think we can officially get, my, my second question, we've officially gone and passed the, the jinxing time, but your snow budget, how did you do this last year?
If memory serves me correct, and I haven't looked at it consciously, I don't want to look at it because I don't want to come up with anything I have to spend, I think we're turning over somewhere around $150,000.
Okay.
So there was a surplus, there was a six-figure surplus that'll get returned back to free cash or whatever Mr. Mayo and Kevin decided to do.
Kevin higher.
It still might be, that's, I'm, I'm giving you a conservative estimate because I, I don't want to put my team in a bad spot, but.
We have had snow in May before, so let's not jinx it.
It'll melt, right?
Should I put it at what, 700 then, ballpark?
Yes, give or take, maybe just a kiss under it.
But you just can't predict that, but thank you for returning it to free cash.
No, you're welcome.
This was great, I think, you know, some of the councillors have been asking for engineering to come. I would love this to become a yearly thing of the projects you're working on. That was really helpful, so thank you.
You're welcome. Well, thanks for having us, we appreciate it.
Thank you both, guys.
Thank you. As I said, item number six, 4th of July Parade.
All right, Madam Chair, move to approve the request from the Independence Day Committee to hold the 76th 4th of July Parade on Tuesday, July 4th, 2023, beginning at 5:00 PM and to use North Ave from the Wakefield Reading Line to the intersection of Church Street, Church Street to the intersection with Common Street, Common Street and Main Street from Common Street to the Galvin Middle School driveway from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM or until the parade's conclusion and to use Quanapaw at Parkway for staging purposes for the parade and to use the Civic Center for restroom facilities and to use the Galvin Middle School parking lot for participants.
Second, okay. Any discussion, Councilor Dervoski?
I just wanted to remind everyone that the parade really needs our help this year as they do every year. Julyparade.org is the website you can go to, either to sign up to volunteer or to donate. So julyparade.org.
Great, and.
I would also add to that in terms of volunteers, they're always looking for kids to hold signs and also they give hazard pay for it for picking up after some of the horses and others on the roof, so. Any kid who wants to earn some quick, quick cash, good, good way to do that.
And Steve, you've met with public safety and the schools, like you've been meeting, everyone's okay with this?
We've already had our preliminary meeting. You know, we have preliminary, preliminary meeting, then we have a closer to the event meeting, then we have an after event meeting every year. That's already occurred here and everything, everything's going the way it should.
Great. Okay, all in favor? Aye, great, thank you. Public hearing.
Madam Chair, move to set the public hearing date for the fiscal year 2024 Water and Sewer Rate Hearing on June 26, 2023 at 7:02 PM.
Second, any discussion? Councilor Vincent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This question's for the town administrator.
This question's for the town administrator. The MWRA Board of Directors published their preliminary assessments in March. Their next meeting is Wednesday, June 21st. Last year, their final assessments at their June meeting differed from the earlier preliminary assessments. So my question is, if the MWRA Executive Board's final assessments at their June 21st meeting differs from their preliminary assessments, will the Advisory Board of Public Works and DPW be able to reevaluate the recommendations to the town council between those five days? Because we had a long discussion last year.
Yeah, that'll be their job to do that.
But just remind them that June 21st is the MWRA Executive Board meeting.
Yeah, that's why we wait as long as we can on this month.
Thank you.
Just, Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Mayo. I'm assuming we can't wait obviously beyond the end of fiscal year.
No, we can't.
So this is pretty much the last fight at the apple.
Right, this is, yeah, this is as late as we can go.
Yep.
I remember years when they've gone way beyond for whatever reason or the other two, way back when MWRA. So then we may have to reassess later on, but they'll be good.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, thank you. Item number eight, public engagement policy discussion. I will turn over to Tom Mullins.
Yeah, Madam Chair. In March, the Supreme Judicial Court announced its decision in Barron versus Kalenda. In that case, the court held that the town of Southborough and its select board chair could be sued for enforcing the select board's public comment policy, which provided that "all remarks and dialogue in public meetings must be respectful and courteous, free of rude, personal, or slanderous remarks." I must say, that's a formula I would have thought was pretty innocuous until this case came down. After, specifically in that case, after a speaker who availed herself of the opportunity to speak before the board during its public comment period twice referred to the chair as Hitler and accused the board of breaking the law, the chair ordered her to be silent and threatened to have her removed. The court held that discourteous, rude, disrespectful, or personal speech about governmental officials and governmental actions is clearly protected by the state constitution. The town was free to set reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions and to insist that speakers be peaceable and orderly, but the chair's reaction crossed the line into unconstitutional restraint. In fact, the chair was held not entitled to what's called qualified immunity, meaning that if a jury were to return a verdict against him, he could have been held personally liable for any damages. Let me begin by giving you some advice that I know you're going to reject. You should not hold any public participation periods at all, period. The law does not require them. The open meeting law only guarantees that the public has the right to attend, to listen to, and record open sessions. The public has no right to speak unless a public hearing is conducted within an open session. And public hearings are required only where a statute, regulation, or bylaw calls for one. The town council, for example, holds public hearings when deciding whether to grant a liquor license. If, as I expect, my recommendation of complete abandonment is not accepted, the next best thing for you to do would be to trim your public participation policy, a copy of which I passed out to each of you before the meeting, to fit the new requirements of the Barron case. The policy predates your name change from the Board of Selectmen to Town Council, so obviously references to the board are going to have to be changed anyway. Substantively though, I believe the only language requiring amendment comes at the end of Section 1, and I highlighted it. It reads, and I quote, "Abusive, defamatory, or remarks deemed by the chair as personal in nature will not be tolerated, nor will discussion of personnel matters affecting individual employees or collective bargaining issues be permitted during the public participation segment. These actions will be ruled out of order. Persons engaged in such conduct will forfeit their remaining time or, if necessary, be ejected from the meeting," end quote. Since the Barron Court cited with something close to approval, the rude and personal rhetoric, as they said, they described it, that Massachusetts citizens applied to British officials in colonial times. I don't believe that the court would uphold our chair's ejecting a speaker because of his abusive remarks or because the chair deemed such remarks personal in nature. We might have better luck defending that part of the rule that forbids discussing personnel or collective bargaining issues, but you know, you can imagine a situation where these issues would be held part of the core of the First Amendment. I therefore recommend just deleting the language that I just quoted entirely and replacing it with the text that we know the court would plainly approve, which would be, quote, "Persons who choose to speak during the public participation segment must behave in a peaceable and orderly manner," end quote. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Councillor Chines?
Just a logistical question. The handout that we have looks like it's a different version of the public participation policy than what's in our packet. There's a paragraph in the packet, paragraph four, that says, "If the board is considering matters of citizen concern at a regular meeting, the public shall be allowed to ask questions or make statements." Looks like that's missing here.
I think this is the updated. The packet is the updated.
The packet is the updated one, okay. I only asked just, that had kind of jumped out at me when I read it, just because, well, everything we consider is a matter of citizen concern. I mean, that's kind of what we do. You know, and so I, you know, this is probably something that, you know, we as a committee should sort of sit with and think about, but that might be another piece that we'd want to look at or maybe reframe in some way.
Any other questions or comments? Councillor Dabrowski?
I do just, to clarify what Councillor Chines was saying, so you're referring to paragraph four that's online?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one that starts, "If the board is considering matters of citizen concern at a regular..."
Do we, yeah, so, and that is our latest version? Do we know?
Yes.
Because I don't know that we even need that.
Yeah, you may not.
Right?
Yeah.
It's not, what Mr. Mullins provided us doesn't have that. And I don't know, I think, I don't, because then it involves, you know, it kind of redefines what public engagement is. So I think that we're better off with what Mr. Mullins provided with the amendments that he's made or proposed.
I don't think Tom's new language is in there though, is it?
It's not.
But again, that's right, okay.
So if we adopt this hard copy document with the changes that's proposed, I think that makes sense. I think that what was in our digital packets though.
Yeah, that's fine.
Creates another layer of issue.
I think that was added because there are times that the board does allow people, the chair does allow people to speak. And that's the prerogative of the chair.
I think it would still be the chair's prerogative, right? Without, I think it just kind of creates like a bit of inconsistency with practice versus what the rule would say on that. So I would move then that we adopt this handout with the revisions as proposed by Town Council Mullins.
Discussion, Councillor Dennehy?
If you have a discussion, can we say something about peaceful and orderly? We can say peaceful and orderly, right? Is that different? Because that's, that's different than saying how they have to, the words, their speech.
So what I'm recommending is that we use the very words that the SJC did approve.
Yeah.
And so it would say, "Persons who choose to speak during the public participation segment must behave in a peaceable and orderly manner."
Yeah, so we'll add that. Okay, yes, good.
So just to clarify, Councillor Dabrowski, your motion is to, our new public engagement policy will be what Mr. Mullins passed out to us, deleting what's highlighted in yellow and adding the sentence he just said.
So I guess just to clarify for, yeah, just for the record, so in paragraph one, we would, we would strike the word, from the word abusive all the way to the word meeting. And then we would add in the language, Mr. Mullins, that was peacefully and...
Yeah, the peaceable and orderly manner.
Yeah.
Orderly manner would be added.
Would be added. And wherever there's a reference to Board of Selectmen, that will be updated.
To Town Council.
Councillor Vincent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had one other question since we're revisiting this document. Halfway through paragraph one, it does say, "The total time allotted for public participation may be increased by a vote of not less than two-thirds of the board members present." Because we have seven, that requires five out of seven. I was wondering if perhaps we want to change that to a majority? That if a majority of the town council wanted to increase the time allotment, so that's four out of seven, as opposed to five out of seven, which is well over 70% in the supermajority.
Yeah, I mean, you certainly could do it. It's your policy, you, it's really not a legal question for me, it's more a policy question for you.
Right, that's why I'm raising it, to see if anybody thinks that's something we should do before I have a motion. I just didn't know if anyone was interested in that change or not.
Councillor Dabrowski?
I have no issue with that, I think that makes sense.
Councillor Chines?
I just, maybe just a suggestion. I think there are a couple of things that we're seeing here, and I think, you know, you raised a really good point. I would maybe just suggest that we, you know, maybe lay it on the table for a vote at our next meeting, just to give people a chance to review the document for Mr. Mullins to kind of collect all of the feedback and actually put a clean version in front of us to review.
Just as to avoid being sued right now though, could we maybe just strike the...
Yeah, I was going to recommend, I think it makes sense while we're talking about it and it's fresh in everyone's memory, to eliminate the sentences that begin abusive, defamatory, or remarks deemed and ending at the end of paragraph one. Just delete that and replace it with the language I read earlier.
I think as a step one, at least, we at least do that much now, just so we don't, we kind of don't have more exposure than we need, necessary. And then we can certainly revisit it next meeting.
How do you feel about that, Councillor Chines?
I'm fine with that. I just, as we're talking about other changes, I would rather make sure that we all have a chance to kind of look at a clean document.
We have a clean draft, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Councillor McLean?
I'm in favor of much of the discussion I heard, but I just wanted to point out that on the agenda, we were not anticipating a vote on this. So I would rather put it over and as Councillor Chines indicates, you know, get everything done. On the other hand, given that people are nervous about us getting sued, I'm happy to vote for the highlighted deletion.
You don't really have to worry about being sued so long as we don't act on this policy. Okay? We've got this policy here, it's old now and needs to be updated. But if the chair faces someone who calls her Hitler, my advice would be just to keep it cool.
Yeah.
Sit there, take it. Three minutes will pass and it's over. And you can see now why I don't like public participation.
Yeah, going back to your first sentence that you said. So, so I agree that it seems like we need more work on it. And if public participation is done today, and I think we put this on our agenda for next meeting and get a clean copy and go on that. I do, I do think, Councillor McLean, it doesn't always need to say votes anticipated. If somebody makes a motion, we can vote on it, so we can, but I think we can add this to next, our next meeting and have a clean copy.
I mean, I think, I think it would be, to Mr. Mullins' point, it'd be incumbent on our chair at the next meeting to, you know, not actually shut down any conversation that is abusive or defamatory, but it sounds like if we did that, we're, you know, we're in good shape.
But I might suggest too, we could also just have this as the first agenda item before post-true to engagement.
Great suggestion.
And then that resolves the issue.
All right.
So there was a motion that we seconded.
Make a subsequent motion to lay this on the table for our next meeting with the expectation that we'll put it on the agenda before public engagement.
Second. Great. All in favor? Great. Thank you.
I was up for problem solving.
That was great, that was great. Okay, moving on to liaison updates. Let's see. I clicked on too many things. Oh, liaison updates, that's not what I thought it was. Liaison updates. Councillor Smith-Galvin, let's start with you, sorry.
No, it's okay, let me just, I have a menu in different places. I'm going to start with the easiest, which is Environmental Sustainability Committee, which you all heard a report on last, two weeks ago, so I'm not going to belabor those. In terms of the police department, spoke with Chief Scory, and he is most excited over the end of construction of the police department and wanted to extend a personal invitation to the council and members of the public to come to the open house to see the new police department on May 23rd. The fence is coming down, the parking at Union Street is being restored, and it's a new day at the police department. So, hope to see everybody on the 23rd. Traffic Advisory Committee, Lieutenant Anderson reports that they have recently installed the flashing stop signs at Prospect Street and Chestnut Street due to a number of recent crashes, and the hope is that there will be a positive impact there. And speed signs, as I had noticed, have been moved now to North Avenue. And so people can tell their speed around the lake, and the speed limit signs will be, they're already up there, will be installed soon so that you can compare your speed to what the speed should be, which by the way is 30, even if it doesn't say that anywhere. And then at the next Traffic Advisory Committee, there will be discussion of the school zones, expanding the school zones around all of the schools, which is what we talked about a little earlier. A lot of that has come out of the work of the Safe Roots to School Program and the department, the Engineering Department. And there'll also be some enhanced signage around school zones. Finally, the 3A or 40A, I'm not quite sure what the MBTA Communities is called, but...
Not 40A?
It's 40A, but it's also called the 3A Working Group. Anyway, this is the MBTA Communities, essentially law whereby MBTA Communities will need to rezone for multifamily by right. The committee is meeting biweekly, so every two weeks on Tuesdays. We have an excellent consultant, I'm not quite sure from what agency, Ezra's from, Housing maybe? But he is a, he did, if you recall, a couple of...
Mass Housing.
Mass Housing. Probably about two years ago, he also was part of our public forum on housing in the area, and he is excellent. We are looking at a number of different zones around not only the Wakefield Station and the Greenwood Station, but also potentially, we are within a half mile of the Melrose Highland Station as well, that might also be an opportunity. And we, there's a lot, some really wonderful tools that we're looking at, and we can play with different numbers, different sizes, and we're very much trying to figure out what works in each region, whether it's a three-family, four-family. And while it is by right, we will have as a community a fair amount of leeway to say what we expect to be there in there by right. So parking, outdoor space, we're looking at yards, you know, setbacks and things like that. So there is a lot of discussion going on, very robust discussion, and I think within just probably a couple of weeks, we'll be ready to present some ideas to the public. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Dennehy.
So Department of Public Health, they received a grant that has language translators in at Town Hall, so I believe it translates into 20 different languages, so non-native speakers can come in and receive services and talk to people at Town Hall, which is really a great thing in terms of making our community more inclusive. They also have redone their tobacco regulations so that if a store changes hands, that they will no longer be, the new owner will not be able to sell tobacco products. So they put that into place recently. They've also been busy licensing and permitting summer camps. They're doing restaurant inspections on a rolling basis. They recently have changed from, changed to a system where they kind of prioritize what is in terms of safety, so going to like nursing homes, schools, restaurants, in terms of prioritizing those, and it's been really, it's been a very successful rollout. They've been the, the new position with the social worker that was hired has been well utilized and has connected many people of different ages to a lot of different services. So they're keeping busy. They are working with Stonem, so that, I haven't heard any complaints, so. So they've been busy and I'm grateful for those grant opportunities for our town.
Great, thank you, Councillor Dabrowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll start with Department of Public Works. They have $15 million worth of work in the pipeline. They have four engineers. So they have had an incredible amount of pit permit sales this, so far this season, which has been great. A lot of people are really digging the pit right now, which is awesome.
Sorry, was that an intentional pun there?
Someone had actually pointed out recently, it's not really much of a pit anymore because we've really filled it at this point, but anyhow. Spring rain barrels, 132 were sold this spring at a $20 discount because of an awesome grant opportunity that provided itself. In addition, 40 backyard composters have also been purchased at about a 50% discount. They're selling for about $25 apiece. Also today, we broke ground on the Lindfield Interconnection that we had talked about, that water connection, which will provide benefits obviously to Wakefield. Director Conway kind of stole my thunder a little bit with the line painting because I was going to pass it along. Just keep in mind that that's going to be overnight, starting in the business districts. That will be both stop lines as well as crosswalks. We do need to come up with a more uniform and a more, I think, a more lasting visible, you know, color scheme there, but that's something we have to be working on, and that will come back to the council. And finally, just a reminder that curbside pickup of all of your yard waste is this Saturday, the 13th. So be sure to put out any of your lawn and leaf bags or any of your containers that hold your compost or your yard waste. Please put it out on Friday evening. Reminder that they come early in the morning, so please make sure that you have it out the night before. And the pit will not be open on Saturday because of the safety issues of bringing so much of that back in and out. So instead of making your way to the pit, just make your way to your curb, make sure you get all of those lawn and leaf bags out this Friday night. Historical Commission, they, the Floral Way project you heard about, they had a really significant role in offering input relative to that project, and I think it's a much better project as a result of what the Historical Commission had to say relative to that. So that is a real testament to their positive influence in trying to maintain the character and history of our town. So I recognize that. The Soldiers and Sellers Monument, we know about that grant already. That's a really great opportunity for us going forward to restore a monument. Councillor Vincent, at a really good time too, I think, a really good point in history for us, they're celebrating an anniversary very soon on that. And they continue to work on looking for other ways in which they can continue to have an impact. have an impact, things like the signage on homes to identify historic properties and the like. So they're a really impressive group, and they're incredibly committed, and I think we'll have, you know, the more that they can be involved and integrated with DPW, which, to Bill Reyno's credit, he's done a really good job of bringing them to the table and asking for their input, soliciting their input on a number of projects, and I think that's been a really important synergy there that we haven't had in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McLean.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna ask for the ability to provide an update in a couple of weeks at our next meeting, and two of my liaisons have reached out, but I haven't been able to make contact. Council of Aging, on aging and Commission of Disabilities. I have been able to make contact with the Gas and Light, they're moving along with their Home Rule petition that they hope to, you know, help move forward the energy park. They have indicated to me that that is moving along. They've normalized the electric rates after a couple of rough months during the winter, and the rates have come down a bit, so they're feeling pretty good about that. They also have received, they advertised for trees, and they've received 31 requests, they have at least another 20, you know, they're gonna do a minimum, I believe, of 50. So all you have to do, if you're interested in a tree, is call into the Gas and Light, and they will send their arborist out, and they have their own program in addition to our program for trees, so they wanted me to actually bring that up tonight because they would like to get a few more calls. Yes?
Because I think the deadline passed, so they are, they have extended it, it's still open?
Director, I talked to the director a couple of days ago.
Great, good to know.
He said, "Call in." So if you have friends looking for trees, make that call.
Great.
And they'll send their arborist out. Relative to the library, I talked to the director, things went well with blossoms, they don't have a, they made funds, they don't have a definite number yet. They're working on grants for preservation, they're continuing their program for digitizing as well, which is different from the preservation grants that they've just applied for, and they're hoping that, to actually expand the jazz program, if they can, this summer. So stay tuned on that one. That was, pun intended, Jonathan, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, and not the library per se, but we did have the last book collection over at The Herd for the book sale, which is coming up towards the end of the month. I'm sorry, I can't remember the exact date, but we had the, we had the volunteers collecting books at The Herd last Saturday morning, up until about 11 to 12 o'clock, very active group of people, and they're still looking for space, as we all know. That's it for now, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Vincent.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I decided to do mine in alphabetical order. Bylaws Review Committee, Attorney Mark Borowski is exactly what he's advertised as. He's the preeminent zoning law expert in Massachusetts, he has been superb. We hired him, the town hired him to assist with the review of Wakefield zoning bylaws. There's been two meetings with him so far with the bylaw review committee. Both of those meetings have lasted two and a half hours and longer, which means you're all gonna be fighting me to become the liaison of the bylaw review committee come this summer. I've been impressed that at both of those meetings with Attorney Borowski, DPW representatives, the Community and Economic Development Coordinator, the ZBA has had numerous members, and the Planning Board have had numerous members attend both of those meetings. So they're very robust meetings, I've been very impressed with the level of participation and progress, and I'm glad to see a lot of the different players in our zoning bylaws are active participants in the meetings with Attorney Borowski. So far, he has provided preliminary drafts of three sections of the zoning bylaws, purpose and authority, non-conforming uses and structures, and administration and procedures, and this just gives you an idea of the volume of the stuff that he's already produced for us. Next is the Fire Department. The Fire Department has responded to 1,407 emergency incidents during the first four months of 2023. I wrote my notes here, pause for a moment to let that number sink in, 1,407 emergency incidents, which is gonna put them well above the 4,000 mark, which is the reach last year for the first time. The Administrative Assistant, Ann Bootree, retired after serving in the Fire Department for four years and serving the town for 27 years. The Fire Department welcomes Pan Cruciani as their new administrative assistant, and welcomes William Kern, a U.S. Army vet, and Christopher Hagan, a U.S. Marine Corps vet, although frankly, if you're a Marine, you're always a Marine, as new firefighters, both the recent graduates of the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy recruit training class, which is a 50-day rigorous training program. Wakefield Housing Authority. Wakefield Housing Authority had their annual plan for FY '24, was held on March 22nd this year. All tenants and the general public were invited to the meeting to have a comprehensive discussion addressing the proposed five-year capital improvement plan, proposed maintenance and repair plan, current operating budget, responses to the performance management review findings, and the list of housing authority policies, et cetera. The annual finance audit was conducted in March. Additionally, there are monthly financial statements, or financial audits are conducted by another accounting firm. Personally, I've been very impressed over the last year with the working relationship between the Wakefield Housing Authority Executive Director and her staff, and the Wakefield Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. This is the first time, I think, we've had a liaison to the Wakefield Housing Authority, so it's been very eye-opening for me to see exactly what this organization does. Finally, the Veterans Advisory Board, Saturday, May 20th, Coffee Social at 1000 at the Senior Center at 30 Converse Street. There's been more attendance at each of these coffee socials that are held on a monthly basis, and they've also started to invite town officials to come in as guests. The Town Assessor spoke at the last Coffee Social. On Sunday, May 21st, the local Boston Wounded Veterans Motorcycle Ride will travel through Wakefield at approximately 1:00 PM. The guest speaker for our Memorial Day Program on May 29th is Andrew Biggio, who has sponsored this annual motorcycle ride for the past 12 years. This year's ride honors five service members who were injured at the Kabul Airport in Afghanistan on August 26, 2021. That's Sergeant, they're all Marines, Sergeant Wyatt Wilson, Corporal Michael Gretson, Corporal Christian Sanchez, Corporal Tyler Vargas, and Lance Corporal Rommel Finley III. Finally, on Monday, May 29th, Wakefield will honor the fallen at the 2023 Memorial Day Program at 1:00 at the Galvin Middle School Auditorium. I'll provide additional information on that during the announcement section of tonight's meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Chines.
Sure, a couple of updates, although a lot of the stuff that I would have updated, I think we've covered. So we spent a fair amount of time with the Wakefield Public Schools, not at the last meeting, but the meeting before, so I think we're all up to speed there. On the Permanent Building Committee, as Councilor Smith Galvin mentioned, we are like days away from finishing construction and doing sort of the punch list work on the public safety buildings, so that's super exciting. Obviously, really exciting that we're moving ahead with the high school project as well. So just to give folks a sense of next steps there, we're now in the design and development phase, which basically means we're taking what was a schematic design and starting to flesh out the details that would get us to the place where we can actually have documents that we can build off of. So as part of that, we have a number of focus groups that are convening over the next month or so on educational planning, site design, exterior and interior design, sustainability, safety and security, and construction logistics. And these focus groups are a mix of both permanent building committee members and school building committee members, professional staff within our construction contractor, our design firms and so forth, and also subject matter experts from the town. So obviously, the school administration is part of that, DPW is part of it, the town engineer is part of it, and others. What we're aiming to do with all of that is to really get to a place where we've got more detailed design documents that again can lead to an updated estimating process, as well as some value engineering work in July, and then all of that has to be submitted to NSBA for our next submission, which is on August 1st. So if all goes according to plan, the idea is that we would start getting bidding documents out basically around the first of the year, with the goal that construction would start sometime in spring, summer of 2024, doors opening for the new school in January of 2027, and then the demolition of the old school and restoration of the fields by January of 2028, which doesn't seem that long off when you talk about it in that, in that form. Finally, Youth Council, a couple of things that are going on. The first is just a bit of homework for us as a town council. I did get a question from our Youth Council Liaison's, Madeline Naper, who's the Vice Chair of the Youth Council, as to whether we could give them any feedback on ways that the Youth Council could support our work any more effectively. So I said that I would pass that along to the group, and if folks on the council have some ideas, if you want to share those with me, and I can funnel those as well. They also are looking for applications for members for the next school year. They've got some members graduating, and obviously, every year, the committee, the council gets reconstituted. So any high school and middle school students that are interested in doing that, it's a fairly simple application on the town website. Those are due, I believe, on Wednesday, so time is tight, but again, really easy application and be great to see a robust set of candidates come before us next month. So that's what I have.
Thank you, Councilor Chines, and I'll do my updates really quick, building on what you said about the school. I'm the liaison to the School Building Committee, and something that you glossed over was, we received a project funding agreement, which was a huge next step. Thank you, Steve, for your work on that. So the next few months, as Jonathan mentioned, we'll be preparing and planning, and later on, on the agenda, we will be asking for an attorney who will go in front of ZBA, who will be filing with the ZBA this summer. So that project is moving along. Just an update about the Human Rights Commission, they applied for a Mass Cultural Council Grant and won. They have an event on May 27th for Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, it's the second year, at the AmeriCall Center from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. They have a bunch of different cultural events and food events happening at that, on that day. June 1st will be their annual Pride Month event, and then they'll have, on June 15th, will be the Juneteenth flag raising. They also, as we will talk about later, are also like the Youth Council seeking applicants to join the commission with some members having left. So apply if you are interested. And then Finance Committee, we all know what the Finance Committee has been working on, we will see what they are working on at our town meeting next month, and same with the Capital Planning Committee. Article 2 of our, of our, of our town warrant will be the Capital Outlet Committee recommendations, and we will see what they are recommending. Thank you, everyone, for meeting with your liaisons and those updates. Moving on to Item 10, Annual Town Meeting. Councilor McLean, you had asked for a discussion regarding May 15th, 2023 Annual Town Meeting. Do I want to go to Steve, or do you?
Actually, I think, I think based on what I'm reading, we can table that. I was, as you know, was a bit concerned that there might be some clash with the Finance Committee relative to a specific item that we voted relative to funding with ARPA funds. I've read what is in the forward to this meeting that's coming forward, and it doesn't seem to focus on anything in particular, it focuses on being concerned with application of ARPA funds for recurring expenses. I think it's always been understood by this council that we have placed money through ARPA in various places, police, fire overtime, Department of Health, schools, and other positions, and I don't see anything here that indicates to me that there's a focus, at least in the forward, on any one particular item. I think we all understand that eventually ARPA money isn't going to exist, and we're gonna have to phase out various items that we have funded through ARPA. So unless someone wants to have an extended discussion on it, I'm less concerned about it now that I see the printed word than I was two weeks ago.
Anyone want to add anything?
And I think I would add that, you know, we have a pretty robust conversations at, at Finance Committee meetings, and that's their job, and we have a couple members here, or former members, I should say. But in a, in all the budgets that we present from the town council, everything was approved unanimously, with the exception of one budget, which I believe was 14 to 1 or 13 to 1, I'm not sure if they had a full board or not. So in $112 million, 110, whatever it is, that's not bad. So I think we're pretty much on the same page. But as we said in October, we have to be ever vigilant, there's a lot of reasons to be careful going forward, that's how we got financially where we were, so I appreciate the council's support, and I appreciate the give and take with the, with the Finance Committee. So it's a, it's a good process.
Okay, moving on, Item Number 11, Committee Appointments. Item A, Special Municipal Employee for High School Project.
Well, I think this is the, we've had this before, you know, where we would advertise for an attorney to represent the Permanent Building Committee, ostensibly the town, in, in shepherding the high school project through the regulatory process, be that Board of Appeals issues and/or conservation issues, and there will be both on this project. We had a great success with Galvin, we had a great success with the Walton School, people may remember, and I think we can see in other projects where there isn't an attorney, that's a land use attorney, shepherding this, how it kind of plays out. So this is just to advertise, as we discussed before, it's very important that this attorney be made a special municipal employee, so they can actually do other jobs and not be in violation of the law. So this is just to advertise, and we advertise for at least two weeks, so I would think at our second meeting, two meetings from now, we would, if the board so chooses, or council so chooses, we'll be able to appoint a member. Did I hit it right, Tom?
Yeah.
Perfect. So I do need a vote to advertise.
All right, Madam Chair, move to advertise for a special municipal employee for the Wakefield Memorial High School Project.
Any discussion?
I'll just say, this is, this is a lot of work for someone to do, so, you know, as an attorney, knowing how much time you're giving up to do this, whoever ends up being appointed is with much thanks, because there's a lot that's gonna be involved.
Are you sending in your resume?
I am not, I think I've probably conflicted out, right, Tom?
I'm delighted to say I'm the one lawyer in Massachusetts who cannot do it.
And this request really is from, is from the Permanent Building Committee, and, you know, from the chair over there and others, so.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded, all in favor. Great, thank you. Item B, Permanent Building Committee Term Clarification.
Yeah, Madam Chair, at your last meeting, you appointed members of the Permanent Building Committee to three-year terms ending in April of 2026. It will surprise no one that Councilor Vincent and Bylaws Committee Chair Dan Lieber cast an eagle eye on this as on all other matters, and uncovered that there was a discrepancy between that appointment, and I'm sorry for not catching it myself, and the PBC bylaw. That bylaw rather anomalously sets the end for every three-year term at December 31. Yeah. And this was at odds with what's published elsewhere, so it's easy to get confused. There's been a fair amount of back and forth among Mr. Lieber, Councilor Vincent, myself, and Steve, and I think what we settled on is that it would probably be best if those who were appointed to a three-year term ending in April 2026, rather be voted to have their term end December 31, 2025. And we could, at the same time, provide that with respect to those, there should be three, who have a termination date of April 24, their term would end December 31, 23, and those with an April 25 date, their termination date would be December 31, 24.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Councilor Dombrowski?
Just going forward then, Tom, that we would have to advertise for this earlier and do the appointments at a different time than everyone else.
Right, that's right.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, and many thanks to Bob and to Dan.
Thank you, Bob and Dan, Councilor Smith Galvin.
Is there any reason, since we're doing reviews, not to harmonize it with the rest of our committees? Is that possible?
Well, it's in the bylaw, though, so...
Oh, so we'd have to change the bylaw?
It would take a town meeting vote to change the bylaw.
But we're, we're having a number of bylaw changes coming up in town meeting, over the next couple of town meetings, is that not correct?
Yeah, well, I'll have to defer to Mr. Lieber on this, but this, this language has been in here since 2002, and in 2002- been in here since 2002, and in 2017 and 19, we were not able to get the language changed.
Okay, okay.
It requires, if, if the Permanent Building Committee would like to change it, I think that would be a good place for it to start.
That could be an effort that they take on. Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a seconded all in favor. Aye, great.
Everybody has to remember.
Yeah, Sherry, this is on you.
Sherry needs to remember.
To make a little asterisk, and our timeline will be a little different. Great. Item number C, Human, item number C, Human Rights Commission. We had a resignation, so we need a motion to advertise for an unexpired term.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, great, thank you. And item number D, Albion Culture Exchange Committee.
I think I'm going to start, and then Tom's going to jump in, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
That sounds great.
So I just wanted to say that over the years, you know, concerns about the management of the ACE Committee have come to my attention. They've come from town council members, they've come from public, they've come from other members of the committee, kind of over the management and process of the, of how things are handled there. In fact, a few years ago, there was a retirement for a longstanding MLD member that, for some reason, they weren't letting it occur in that space, where that had been the light department for basically this person's entire career, and we got that rectified, but it took councilors and myself stepping in. On June 22 of last year, at our retreat, one of the priorities given to me, or that was discussed at that meeting, and that the town council voted on, or consented on, I should say, was to have the town manage the building, much like we managed the Civic Center. We have a town employee doing it. Demograph does a great job, has a great online system, handles it really well, and definitely makes sure that we have everything we need. We have custodial help, we have a town employee actually there for everything. So that came up in June, and I think we got involved in other things, and I'll take the, shouldn't have gone on so long, that's my fault. So after hearing about a couple of issues, a potential 501(c)(3), which is anybody's right, and a cleaning company doing, that we did not hire as a town, doing some work there, this was all through social media, I was asked to meet with the ACE depart, ACE Committee. I did meet with the chair on February 8th, and I made it clear that this was a town building and had to be handled in a certain way, that the committee could not hire employees to work in there and do things like that, that all had to come through the town, and that we were going to look towards changing the structure there. I sent that out to this board in my tan on September, on, excuse me, February 11th. On March 1st, the chair and I actually met with the committee, the Albion Culture Exchange Committee, to go over those changes, and I think we got a little bit of pushback. We were going to come back with some, with kind of a written policy on that, which I later did, and we had actually hoped to come back at their April meeting, which was canceled, so we couldn't come back to that. At that point, we cert, we heard about some other concerns regarding the building, and at that point, we did bring in Attorney Mullen to handle, as he should, and I implemented on 4/4 on April 4th, the kind of changing of how that's going to be handled, at least in the, in the management and the process of it, and the, and the renting and leasing of it, or zero payment for it, which is really what we prefer, anyway, at this point. And I'm going to say, Dan has done a great job, as I knew he would, I think, as this whole council knew he would, and it was difficult for Dan, because their website did not have everything on it, on the schedule, but he went down on weekends and met with people when he needed to, and I haven't heard of one complaint from anybody that's utilizing it since we took that over. But there are some other concerns that we brought Attorney Mullen in, and I think he's ready to talk to it now.
On March 9 of this year, I sent a letter to ACE Chair Christopher Carino about several issues. A surveillance camera, I understood, had been installed at the building, and that's a problem, because there are town employees who work there from time to time, and I previously advised several members of the administration here that we cannot deploy such devices at a workplace without giving the unions notice and an opportunity to bargain impacts with us. No such notice or bargaining had occurred. I was also concerned about privacy, because I understood that the camera had been synced to the chairman's own personal computer. Second, I understood that the committee was looking to procure window washing services from a private vendor, and I wanted to make sure this was done properly through the public bidding statute, Chapter 30b, and to make sure that if this was bargaining unit work, that instead it was done in-house by the DPW. Most important, though, I was very concerned, because the committee's website said donations would be accepted on behalf of the Friends of Albion Cultural Exchange. No such organization existed. I checked the Secretary of State's website. Now, anyone who gave money to this entity that didn't exist must have thought he was contributing to the improvement and the management of 9 Albion Street, which was and is town property. There's a well-worn process for dealing with such donations. We do it every time you meet. We're going to do it in a few minutes with respect to the library, whereby donations are offered to the town and accepted by the town council and kept in a separate account and expended pursuant to the terms of the gift, but no donations had been reported to the town since February of 2021 from this committee. So I asked for an accounting and information about the group's bank account. On March 12, I got a response from the chair. He confirmed that the camera had been operative but was shut off in or by July 2021. He said that the, his committee had solicited a quote for window washing but hadn't yet procured it and would work through the DPW. But as for donations, he said that this Friends group had received about $1,100 and spent around $800, but didn't offer me any accounting. On March 30, I wrote to him again. I said, it looks like we're not going to have any more problems going forward with the camera or procurement, that's good, but I remain concerned about the donations, and I asked for specific information. And let me just read you what I asked for specifically, because this is worth getting very nuts and bolts about. The names and address, addresses of each donor, together with the date and amount of each one of his/her or its donations, plus any limiting instructions concerning the use to which the funds would be put. The name of any banks at which donations have been deposited, together with the name on each account, the account number, the taxpayer ID number associated with the account, and the name of the person or entity having that taxpayer ID number, and the date, amount, purpose, and payee of any disbursement made from the donated funds. And I noted, and this was a new problem, I hadn't been aware of it earlier, that minutes were missing from this committee on the town's website for a total of 15 meetings. On April 2nd, the chair responded to me with respect to the donations. He promised to create the Friends of the Albion Cultural Exchange, still didn't exist. He did not provide any of the information that I requested. He did say, how come I didn't make similar demands on other groups, such as the Arts Collaborative of Wakefield, and wondered whether my inquiry was politically motivated. With respect to the minutes, he said that they had produced all they could find, and he wondered why the town hadn't noticed the deficiency earlier and brought it to his attention. The next day, I wrote back, explaining that the Arts Collaborative of Wakefield is a private group, the town and I do not police their fundraising procedures, his committee is part of the town of Wakefield, and the Friend, the Friends of the ACE still does not exist. I repeated my request for the accounting, word for word, and I said, if I don't get a response by April 18, I'll have to inform the town council of your noncompliance. On April 18, he wrote to me, and he said, well, the only hard information I got from him was that the Wakefield Cooperative Bank had given two checks for $337.50. Now, is that two checks each for $337.50, or two checks summing up to $337.50? I have no idea. And he said that they were, quote, pending deposit with the town of Wakefield, end quote. I don't know what that means. He said he, the organization had finally been incorporated on April 13, that's true, I checked, but of course, he would now be months away, at least, from getting any tax-exempt status if it happens. I still have no idea what name the account is in, or whose taxpayer ID number it's in, or what checks were received, when, from whom, or how they were expended. Want to be clear, I'm not saying that anybody did anything wrong. I have no basis to say that, but I am very concerned that people have been raising money for a town-owned building in the name of a nonexistent charity, and we know almost nothing about it. I'm concerned also that my repeated explicit requests for an accounting have been deflected rather than being answered, and I suggest you take some action.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Mullen. I know we've all seen copies of the letters that went back and forth, and appreciate the, the time and thought that went into this. You know, just a couple of comments, then I do have a motion to make. I mean, I think this is, you know, sort of a concerning pattern of events, and, and one that's also concerning, because when you look at how the committee was formed, and the goal of the committee to advise the town on how to turn the, what was the former gas and light department into a cultural asset for the community, I think there are some areas where the committee's actually done some good work over the years. You know, the advice that we got as a town on adding gallery-quality lighting, the hanging system for, for devices that are there, the branding of, of the Albion Cultural Exchange, I think are all positive things that the committee did that were very much in the purview of the committee. But I guess as I, I hear sort of what's been going on, and as I've spoken with Mr. Mullen and Mr. Mayor over the last couple of months, I mean, I really have sort of three areas of concern. And I think one is that, you know, the, the committee does seem to be overstepping the bounds of what we expected the committee to do when it was formed, and I think Mr. Mayor covered that well. You know, this building is a public asset, it needs to be maintained by the town of Wakefield, not by a group of volunteers. We don't expect the Friends of the Library, as I should say, that's a bad example. We don't expect, you know, the Recreation Committee to, you know, manage our parks and, and fields. We have the rec department to do that. You know, we should have the same, the same accountability here. I think as Mr. Mullen mentioned, the second issue is really the conflation between the public body, the Albion Cultural Exchange Committee on one hand, and the 501(c)(3). You know, it is not appropriate, in my mind, for a public body to form a 501(c)(3). It's perfectly fine if someone wants to do that, but, you know, the fact that there's a crossing of lines between the responsibilities of the committee members and this 501(c)(3) that's recently formed is problematic. There needs to be a bright line, and clearly that's been, been missing here. And then finally, the third issue, again, that Mr. Mullen summarized well, is the lack of transparency around the funding. It may be that there's some confusion on Mr. Carino's part as to where the funds were donated because of this pending 501(c)(3), but, you know, in my mind, that really just reinforces the fact that the current situation isn't sustainable, in that we do need to, to find a solution to this. So in light of all of that, in light of the fact that the structure that we have here isn't working, I'd like to make a motion to dissolve the Albion Cultural Exchange Committee and to continue to manage the facility through, through the town, through Mr. McGrath and the Department of Public Works. I'd imagine following this, we'll, as a council, have to have some discussions as to if there are other functions of the advisory committee that we'll have to find a home elsewhere, but for today, my, my motion is to dissolve the committee.
Any further discussion? Councilor McLean?
Councilor with an S, Mullen. I had sent an email back in March, and your conclusion at that time, I think this is on March 12, was, I don't know that there's any need to take any action now, because I was wondering if we should have, you know, executive session, because of the first letter that went out. You had indicated there were some problematic practices by a town committee, they've been, they've been told to avoid them, they've responded with a letter that they understand the problems and wish to avoid them in the future. What changed? Was it primarily your lack of, the lack of response that you got relative to this Friends of in the accounting?
What changed was my inquiries, which I, I thought would get honest, responsive, you know, letters in return from, four, got nothing but deflection and misdirection.
Well.
And also, we could not, I don't think, have gone into executive session to discuss this. This is part of the problem with the open meeting law. There are a lot of things that...
There are a lot of problems.
There are, and there are a lot of things that you'd like to be able to go into executive session to discuss that you just can't. Here, if, if there were charges against a public official, we could go into executive session to discuss them with, and the possibility of discipline, with notice to him, he'd have 48 hours' notice, he could show up with a lawyer, but there were no such charges. I was trying to get to the bottom of a factual question.
Was this an investigation?
My letters were the, were the sum of the investigation.
Under the town charter?
Excuse me?
Was it, was it conducted under the town charter?
No, it, well, in, in the sense that every investigation is authorized by the town charter, but this was a, this was in my inquiry into a town committee that had not been treating the money that it was receiving in the proper accounting fashion.
There were some responses, though, that apparently you accepted. I know that town administrators indicated that there was something on social media, but I believe that on the, on your response, when you got the cleaning proposal, you had indicated that you were satisfied that something had not been done.
So as I said, I was ultimately satisfied on the public bidding issue. They had not actually gone out to, they had not awarded any contract, and I was satisfied, at least going forward, on the camera issue. The camera was no longer being used.
There was also a denial that anybody had been recorded, if I recall correctly, from the response?
There was a denial that anybody had been recorded orally, but the, it was acknowledged that the camera did work to catch visual images. There was a denial that there are currently any of those visual images being stored on anybody's computer. That doesn't mean they weren't in the past.
Did we have knowledge that they had been? I mean, did we have the facts when we made that assertion, I won't call it, an allegation?
Well, I had, I had heard, only heard, from the sources that came to the town council to raise these issues, that there, that those images had been synced to Mr. Carino's computer, and so I asked him about that. All he, he said in response was that there were no, that there was not currently resident on any computer any images that were captured during the time that the camera was operative.
There's, it's somewhat concerning to me, from a process standpoint, a due process standpoint, that there's not really a, doesn't appear to be a mechanism here for notice and the opportunity to be heard. I mean, someone could have come on and said, we've done great work over there, as the vice chair indicated, you know, for eight years, but that doesn't answer any of these questions. This is somewhat disturbing to me.
Much more disturbing to me was the fact that I never got straight answers to my very simple, straightforward questions, and I think that those simple, straightforward questions were the due process that was in, he was entitled to, and that the committee was entitled to. If there's no there, then... If there's no there-there, there's a simple way to establish that, just give the facts. I couldn't have been clearer about the kind of simple facts I was looking for with respect to an accounting.
I could see somebody having trouble, you know, going back 18 months or two years if somebody put five bucks in a cup. In terms of identifying them by tin, SSN, and everything else, you know, you were told that Cooperative Bank, I think, has the account, right?
Not the Cooperative Bank, no. It's the Wakefield Savings Bank.
Savings.
He said the Wakefield Savings Bank has the account. He said the Wakefield Cooperative Bank gave him two checks. Again, he said it in a confusing manner that leaves me unable to say how much the checks were for. But he never did say that, well, I'd like to help you, but I don't have the, I don't have accurate records.
Do we know who the members of this Friends of are? Did we make any inquiry to find out if they are different people?
So...
As opposed to the committee itself?
So, the president is Chris Carino, the treasurer is Jamie Dean, the clerk is Chris Carino, vice president and director are Tracy Billicki-Shay. The directors, other directors are Jamie Dean and Chris Carino.
Okay, so there's not exact parity, you know, it's not exactly the people who are on the committee itself. There are some, a couple of other individuals involved?
I don't know who's on the committee.
Just a point of view. Two of the three names that you mentioned are on the committee.
Okay.
One is not. Of two of the three.
And if, at some point, more to the town administrator, we did change the locks, and was anybody given notice of that on the committee?
They would give a notice when it happened.
Okay, when it happened?
When it happened.
Okay. And I would imagine that, relative to control of the building, and that it is a town building, that that would probably solve that issue?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And if we vote to disband the entire committee, we're perhaps, just saying, possibly, if there's a problem with an individual, we're disbanding all six current members of that committee? Am I correct there?
The motion was to dissolve the committee in its entirety.
Right. Since sins of one convey to the whole, I'm trying, if there are sins, I'm trying to wonder whether that's entirely fair.
So...
I know we have the power, Counselor, I'm just saying, is it fair? Is it right?
I invite Jonathan to correct me, because it's his motion, but I don't believe that the motion is for dissolution based on any kind of misconduct. I think, rather, the motion is for dissolution because the town has determined to go in a different direction for the management of this building, more along the lines of the way we have long now managed the American House Civic Center, as the town administrator told Mr. Carino in February of this year.
But we did not disband another committee, to my knowledge. Steve will correct me if I'm wrong.
I think they were actually an independent committee.
Okay.
So, we didn't have the power to...
It wasn't a town?
Wasn't a town committee, as I recall.
I think that was a 501(c)(3).
Yeah.
I guess it's hard for me to totally accept, Counselor, the idea that this has nothing to do with, you know, kind of a cause disbandment, given how we got here.
Well, might we have gone in a different direction if we'd gotten straight answers? Yeah, it's possible.
Counselor Mullen, you had suggested that we, that this council take action. So, what is your recommendation to the council?
I think that the motion before your board is, would be an appropriate approach. I think that if you decided that you didn't want, for whatever reason, to disband the current committee, then you'd have to take action to get answers to my question sooner rather than later. I don't know that it's all that necessary to go into any kind of further inquiry if there is a disbandment and you move in a different direction to manage the building.
And do we have, as a town, any liability relative to what you've raised other, in terms of donations that have been made but have not gone through the normal process, and/or anyone that would have been captured on the video prior to its, you know, I think you said through 2021, so say 2020, 2021?
Yeah. I don't believe that we're going to have any liability going forward. It looks like the total amount of money involved, at least what was represented to us, has so far been relatively small. Again, I think you said about $1,100 was collected. And, and again, I have no basis to say that anything illicit was done with that money, and I'm not, not making that assertion.
Right.
So, no, I think it would be irresponsible not to respond in some way, given that we have now asked the questions that should have been asked repeatedly and have never gotten, again, a straight answer.
So, I'll just say, just for myself, I think the Albion Cultural Exchange is an incredible facility that we've talked a lot about trying to bring online more. I want to be able to see some reconstitution at some point in time where we have our local talents be able to come together and focus more on the programmatic side of things. I think operationally, we have that under control through DPW and Dan McGrath. That seems to be like any other building in town, I think, being able to have, operationally, it managed by the town. But I don't want to see us not have the opportunity for us to have some kind of reconstituted committee that has, I think, a clearly defined charge, that brings our arts and cultural, you know, folks together so that we can have robust programmatic, you know, offerings. Because I think that's ultimately what the bread and butter of this building should be going forward. And so, as long as, you know, I would imagine, I don't know, but I imagine we're all on the same page with that going forward. So, this doesn't just become a rental hall. That's certainly never been the intention. But I do think we have a way of addressing this so that we can continue to have really, you know, we have a great foundation, and I am very thankful to everyone who's been a part of getting us to this point. But I think we have, you know, a lot of opportunity going forward with the right committee and a clear charge of what we're looking for as far as, you know, as far as a town, because there's, there's a lot of potential for that building, I think, right now, and I'd like to see us be able to realize it.
I will say that members of the Arts Collaborative have already reached out and have met with Dan Mary Yang just to do exactly what you're talking about.
Is that right?
Yes.
All right. That's good to hear.
Yeah.
Because, again, I just feel like that's been so underutilized right now, and it gets such a great asset to our town and for our economic, you know, our downtown economic vitality, too.
Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Mullen, I need a couple of minutes of help from you. I certainly understand your conclusion about the noncompliance and noncooperation. My hiccup is, I can't discern right now whether this is a two-step process or a three-step process. Based on the motion, it's a two-step process. The information you provided us, and then our decision whether to dissolve the committee or not. But I look at the investigative powers under the town charter, 3.2f, that says the town council may investigate or may authorize the town administrator to investigate the affairs of the town and the conduct of any town agency. And when you look at the definition of town agency in another section of charter, it includes a voluntary board. And to take appropriate action, a report of the results of the investigation shall be placed in the file, on file in the office of the town council and should be published in the annual report. Why isn't the second step now, based on your conclusions and your correspondence back and forth with the committee, for us to invoke our investigative powers? And when was the last time this town council invoked their investigative powers?
You certainly could launch an investigation. Again, I tried to do an investigation to the extent that I could, simply by asking As for the last time, I don't recall.
I can't.
No. We fairly frequently do confidential investigations in response to things like, say, a claim of sexual harassment. But that's done on an HR kind of basis, and not, I don't, I wouldn't regard that as the kind of investigation that's subject to the charter. Here, you certainly could, and maybe you should. I think I got to that when I was answering Counselor Dombrowski, and I said, one entirely plausible response to the information you've heard tonight is to say, we're going to move in a different direction, we're going to disband this committee, and we're going to manage the property. A second response, which could be adopted at the same time, would be, we are going to investigate this rigorously. The town council has tried with his repeated letters. He hasn't been able to get anywhere. Maybe we can do better. Now, query how much better you can do, because it's not like you have subpoena power.
Correct, yeah. That's why I'm asking you here for your advice. That's my hiccup, whether we should invoke our investigative powers or not.
My point is, I wouldn't get hung up on the language of the charter. You don't have any investigative powers in the sense that state agencies or Congress does, because you can't compel.
Did we check all other town committees before we, as a part of this process, letter writing process that you did, before we mentioned that there were missing minutes by this committee? Because I have been led to believe that not everybody was dotting their i's and crossing their t's on that.
Well, I asked about that, and I understood that while there were some other committees that hadn't dotted all their i's, there was no offender as great as the ACE committee.
I thought there was one committee that had not put up minutes for two years, but the town administrator indicated to me had, upon learning of this, had immediately rectified it. Is that more or less accurate?
I don't think it was two years, but there was a committee that was a little bit more behind it.
I mean, that one, to me, seemed to be a weak...
Yeah.
...argument. And taking this situation on the whole, I'm just disturbed by how we're treating volunteers here.
And I should say, I'm not particularly exercised about the absence of minutes. And you heard me say that I was satisfied on the whole with the committee's response with respect to procurement and the camera issue. But I have big, big problems with their accounting practices, and I think you should be extremely concerned about the unresponsiveness in the letters that have been sent in response to our inquiries about their accounting.
I understand your point, but I think, you know, if it is $1,100, you know, it's a small, something they're trying to put together, you know, yes, maybe they should already have their 501(c)(3) paperwork done. My understanding is they got an EIN. My understanding is, as you say, they've done various things to register. I wonder if every other small charitable organization would be held to the same standard. And I'm not discounting your concerns. I'm saying I have my own concerns about the disbandment or dissolution of a committee. From what I'm hearing, it's simply going to be a situation where another one will be stood up with different people.
So, you know, as I said earlier, there may be various problems with other charities in town. The difference is, those charities are not operated for the benefit of the town, and that is what nominally, at least, the Friends of the ACE is supposed to be.
Nominally. And you've assumed that someone putting money in a jug or wherever, writing a check, was giving money to the building. And it may be, also, there may be an argument that those folks liked the people who were doing the events in there and were trying to help in some other way other than the building. I understand it's a town committee. I'm just saying, I don't, I think, over the amounts we're talking about here, over the various letters, the points that we've made, this is not, you know, we have made certain assertions, not with my knowledge, not with my hearsay knowledge either, you know, that have gone out on behalf of the entire town council, and not all of them have necessarily, as you've indicated, proved out to be that big of a deal. Now, I'm not discounting what you're saying, but I'm saying there could be alternative explanations without some back and forth and finding out. And I understand that you're not happy with the responses to the second letter. It really was the second letter, I think, that did it.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. I, I do think it's problematic, since we don't have any answers, that we're wondering where did the money, was it from a jar? Was it, you know, somebody gave $500? We don't have that accounting, so that's problematic for me. But I just have a couple of questions, just from my own knowledge. Is it, Counselor Chines said that the Albion Council forming a 501(c)(3) as a public body was problematic?
Yeah, so the point that I was making is, let me draw an analogy with the library. So, we have the Board of Library Trustees. We have the Friends of the BB Library. They are two separate organizations. The Friends of BB is a 501(c)(3) that is stood up by people that are independent of the Board of Library Trustees. They certainly meet with the library staff and ask for recommendations about how they can donate money to the library, and when they do make those donations, they come to us on the agenda.
Right.
But there's a bright line between those two organizations. And, you know, for me, the problematic piece is that the Albion Cultural Exchange Committee, as a public body, is effectively an extension of us...
Right.
...should not be forming a 501(c)(3).
Okay.
If there are private individuals that want to form a 501(c)(3), wonderful. And I actually hope that there is a 501(c)(3) that supports the Albion Cultural Exchange. But as a public body, the committee shouldn't be doing that. And if you look back at the agendas and the minutes, there does seem to be a conflation of their responsibilities as a town committee versus the managers of this 501(c)(3). So, that's where I was going with the bright line comment.
Okay. Well, I was just curious, because this, I don't mean to get off on a tangent, but I remember that the PTOs, when I was on PTO, it became to light that they said, you're not a 501(c)(3). Somebody had an issue with it, and then we all had to form 501(c)(3)'s, or at least Greenwood did. Is that related or not related?
I couldn't comment. I know nothing about the particular case.
Because that's, isn't that a public...
I think the PTOs are 501(c)(3)'s.
They are 501(c), well, they weren't before. This is, they were before, and then they had to become one, but they, aren't they public bodies?
No.
No? Okay.
They're volunteers?
No, they're, I mean, again, they're five, they elect their own officers, they're 501(c)(3)'s. They're not technically town bodies.
They were never 501(c)(3)'s. Like, that's a recent thing that happened. But they're volunteers, but just like the Albion Cultural Exchange.
They're not appointed by us.
That they're not appointed by us. Okay, so that's what I, that's what I was just trying to understand. And I didn't mean to get off on a tangent, I was just curious, and I wanted to ask that question. I do think that the committees worked hard. I think that they've done good things, and I don't want to discount that. And I think that they were perhaps a bit rote because they didn't understand the process. But at the same time, I don't think that that's an excuse. I don't think that that's an excuse. But I do think that, you know, perhaps we have a responsibility so that this is avoided in the future, because it's a really unfortunate situation, it's an uncomfortable situation. They are volunteers, and, you know, I do feel badly about that. But, you know, thinking about moving forward, how can we work with organizations so that this doesn't happen in the future? Can we develop policies or procedures, or is there something that can be kind of an operating manual? This is what you can do, this is what you can't do?
Well, there is, and it is a volunteer operating manual...
Okay.
...that you've seen, that went out to the council, that we will tweak on this. And I think we need to man each committee, and I say man personnel-wise...
Yeah.
...each committee better to make sure they understand. But I would tell you, many...
Yeah, I think that, I think having meetings, I think that having meetings with...
Minutes, rotation of chair, things like that, it's all in the manual. But we have very many committees, and I don't want to pick on any of them, let's say the Human Rights Commission...
Mm-hmm.
...that do collect money at many events and turn it in to the town, and they're used. You have the Council on Aging, you're always getting donations. We have a 20,000-plus donation from the Friends of the BB Library going in. So, there is a very, very good mechanism for this...
Yeah.
...that should be followed.
Yeah. I just think just having, I just, I just think that... Yeah, I just think just having, I just, I just think that having, like, you know, when we have a new organization, that we have a training session. We kind of say, "Here are the expectations. Here's what you can do, here's what you can't do. If you want, you know, new lights in this public building, you need to work with us to establish that."
That was made extremely, I could not have been clearer. And yet, at the next, at the meeting that they didn't have, which was scheduled for May 3rd, which I guess was canceled, window cleaning maintenance, we talked about that on the agenda. It was on their agenda. New window replacement options explored with local vendor Shalmar. I mean, I don't know. You know?
Yeah, that's concerning.
What really galls me, and I wasn't going to say this, but was public, funding gifts and donations. Mass Cultural Council, cultural facilities, when announced. We are still in bold. We are still ineligible due to lack of nonprofit structure. Okay, I get that, because they don't have the tax ID number, because that's very difficult to get, nonprofit. It takes a while, I should say. Most, many private foundations willing to fund once we establish nonprofit. Okay, I can accept that. As a Wakefieldian, as the town, as working for the town council, as the town administrator, most donors unwilling to donate to town of Wakefield. I find it appalling that that was in your agenda and posted. So, I don't know. Other things in there, too.
No, I think it's, you know, I think that, you know, $1,100 that we can't, that they can't account for is absolutely concerning in terms of, you know, and allowing them to stay, to continue when we haven't been able to get any answers is problematic. But, yeah, I just think that we just need to be really clear in terms of making sure that somebody's monitoring. I think that we need more monitoring going on.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Can I just offer that? I think that, you know, kind of looking forward, I feel like in recent years, the role of vice chair has been a little bit like that, like, almost like a liaison to all committees, boards, and commissions. And perhaps if we think about, like, maybe having a little bit more of a formalized understanding of the role of vice chair, this seems like the kind of thing that, across the board, might be something good in terms of part of the responsibilities of whomever a vice chair would be in a given cycle. For any, again, I'm focused on anyone that we're appointing. Any, you know, the 501(c)(3)'s that exist out there, incredibly appreciative for the work that they're doing, but we don't have direct oversight, obviously, over that in any way. But we do, we are responsible, I think, for the people that we appoint. So, being able to maybe have that as a function of the vice chair going forward might be a way to maybe look at this and just have, you know, so, like, another point person also for, you know, chairs of committees, to be able to go and bounce things off of. And so, there's a clearer face of the town council who works with, you know, these different bodies.
Maybe that becomes their liaison. Maybe that becomes their, who their liaisons to. Yeah.
Counselor McLean?
I think you had your hand up first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think these are all really good ideas. I just keep coming back to the $1,100, and I don't think it's an insignificant amount of money. I mean, the Environmental Committee, I think our very, like, first six months, we got a donation from Black Earth, and we had to do a special, you know, items not anticipated to do this. So, I agree that not all committees are of equal sophistication or no. But the fact remains that if this 501(c)(3) is formulated to go, essentially, like the Friends of the BB, they will be giving money to the town of Wakefield, because this board, if it's for the building at least, will come to us. And it concerns me that the same person who's forming the 501(c)(3) and has not been able to account for the funds, you know, potentially, will have this blurred line. And so, I definitely think that we need to rethink the role and the constitution of this committee.
Counselor McLean?
Is this accurate? Steve, the policies you're talking about, though, they were recently formulated?
Yes.
And hand-delivered to this committee?
Emailed. Email, Cherry, not hand-delivered.
But recently?
Yeah.
Recently?
Right.
Very recently. Do we have a policy that states, for example, that a committee member, be it, you know, anybody, that they should or shouldn't be on, you know, part of a 501(c)(3)? Is that something we are considering?
No, I mean, no. It's not, it's not a policy now, sort of.
Well, I just took ethics training, right? If you're on a 501(c)(3), you cannot be the person that goes and asks for things on behalf of that 501(c)(3) from a government employee. So, there are definitely part of the ethics rules on this that are nothing new.
I don't think we have that policy.
No, but it's a state, it's a state policy. It's a state policy.
But knowing what the policies are is hidden. It's not, it's not-
Well, everybody has to take ethics training. Every single person that volunteers, that is sworn in this town, has to take-
I just think that we should just, I think it's our responsibility as a town for to make it crystal clear, so that there's no, like, "Oh, I didn't know, I didn't know." That we need to have, I think we need to have it documented. I don't think it needs to be long.
There's also rules, right, about whether you ask for money and how you ask for money. And we don't know how any of this came about. We have no idea how any of this came about. I'm not saying there was anything, you know, necessarily nefarious happening, but we don't know. I think the fact remains that we do not know what happened. And we don't seem to be any closer to finding out.
Any other comments, questions? There was a motion and seconded. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Six, one, Cherry. Thank you. Moving on to item number 12, donations.
Move to accept and expend a gift or gifts to the library in the amount of $20,690 from various donors with thanks.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
That's the way it's supposed to be done.
All in favor? Seven, zero, thank you. Item number 13, approval of minutes.
Move to approve the April 24, 2023 town council meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, seven, zero, thank you. Item number 14, town council reorganization. Do I have a motion for chair? Yes, Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Yes, I would like to nominate Jonathan Chines for chair of next year's town council.
And do you accept?
Yes.
And discussion?
I, I don't even need my notes. I just want to say that I think Jonathan would be a wonderful chair. He has already very much proven himself as vice chair, being a real partner, not just to Maureen, but always accessible, not just to his colleagues, but also, I would say, to town employees, to the town administrator, and to constituents. He has been a leader on things that are important currently into the future of Wakefield, the Vision 2030, taking a real leadership role in the high school, being an advocate for the lake. I could just go on and on. I just want to say, I've been vice chair, and I've been chair, and it is, it's a big job. As Maureen knows, as Jonathan knows from half of it, it's a job that requires engagement and a lot of work and a lot of attention to detail. And I really believe that Jonathan is capable to take this on and be an inclusive, respectful council chair.
Counselor Vincent?
Just for completeness purposes, I second the motion.
You actually don't have to second a chair or motion.
Something we've learned over, over the last six years, but thank you.
We can add it, yeah. Yep, you actually don't have to. Okay, any, any other nominations for chair? Okay, all in favor for Jonathan as chair? Unanimous, seven, zero. Last time. And Chair Chines, I am passing that on to you.
Thank you.
We will re-assimilate.
Chair Chines is going to be hard to say.
That is hard to say. Just before we move to, to the next agenda, I just want to say, thank you, thank you, Julie, for the really kind words, and to everyone for, you know, for giving me this opportunity. It's really an honor to serve on this council. It's an honor to serve with, with everyone here. And, you know, I look forward to helping guide us in the future. And when I say us, I really do mean all of us. I firmly believe, you know, that the role of chair is, is one of helping to organize our work, but it's not to drive our agenda. That's what we all do. And so, my goal is really to make sure that we facilitate all the voices on the council and that we make sure everyone's included in doing what we need to do for the town of Wakefield. And to that end, I also want to say a huge thank you to Maureen, both as my predecessor, my friend, our chair for the last year. I think you've really set a great example about how to lead with, with vision, with grace, with wisdom, and have done so with compassion and with inclusivity for everyone on this council. So, I appreciate everything you've done, and you've left a very hard act to follow. So, thank you for a great year of service.
Thank you.
No problem. So, with that, we'll move on. Next on the item is nominations for vice chair. So, I'll open up the floor to any nominations. Counselor Dennehy?
I would like to nominate Counselor Michael McLean as vice chair.
Counselor, do you accept?
I do.
All right, any comments you'd like to make, or?
Well, I think it's great that we're giving opportunities for people who have not had their, who are new to the council and willing to take on that position. So, I think that Mike has proven himself to be a very hard worker, proved himself to be an independent thinker. I think that he brings a lot of experience in his last year on this board. This can be really instrumental in moving the town council forward. And he's willing to spend the time that it's going to take. I know it's a tremendous amount of time being chair and vice chair. So, I thank you both for your willingness to do it. And I think it's going to represent a really great team in moving the council forward for all the work that we have to do. So, thank you, thank you both, but I'm happy to nominate Counselor McLean.
Thank you. Any other nominations? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of Counselor McLean for vice chair? You can raise your hand. All right, seven, nothing. Congratulations, Counselor McLean.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, announcements. Counselor Vincent?
Oh, now I have to say it. Thank you, Chair Chines. Okay, there's, there's two things I want to talk about, because May's a busy month. The first one is Memorial Day, and I'll mention it again at our next meeting. But there's four important things about Memorial Day that's coming up. Monday, the 29th, at 10 o'clock, the Memorial Day program at the Westside Social Club at Molton Field. Monday, February 29th, at 1 o'clock, the 2023 Town of Wakefield Memorial Day Program at the General Galvin Middle School. Friday, May 26th, at 9 o'clock, at the high school. Are going to have their annual Memorial Day Assembly in the fieldhouse, the gym. All veterans are invited to attend, as well as members of the public. And the fourth thing is that Memorial Day flags will be placed at both the Lakeside Cemetery and the Forest Glade Cemeteries in the days prior to Memorial Day. So, interested parties can meet at the Lakeside Cemetery on Monday, May 22nd, at 3:00 p.m. and the Forest Glade Cemetery on Friday, May 22nd, at 3:00 p.m. The second thing I want to mention is that, and this is very personal to me, May is Stroke Awareness Month. And as all of you are aware, my wife had a major stroke 16 years ago. And one of the things I like to remind people when we focus on Stroke Awareness Month are, is the acronym FAST. And that is the symptoms of somebody who has a stroke. The F standing for facial drooping, the A standing for arm weakness, the S standing for speech difficulties, and T standing for time. The essence, the importance of calling 911 whenever you notice somebody having those kind of symptoms. And in our particular case, I woke up on a Sunday morning, and my wife had all three of those symptoms. And so, it's just a reminder here in May that, you know, this is something that we need to pay attention to. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vincent. Other counselors? Counselor Smith-Galvin?
This Thursday evening, STEM Night or STEAM Night, or however we're defining it, returns. SEAM, are we calling it STEAM? So, it's helped me. Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. It's always a great showcase at the Galvin Middle School. I know there'll be a number of different committees there, including the Environmental Committee, where a group of fourth graders are going to highlight what we're doing in town for climate change. So, we worked with them this weekend. And this Sunday's Mother's Day. So, Happy Mother's Day to everyone out there. If anybody wants to run a 5K, the Melrose Run for Women is happening in Melrose on Sunday.
Thank you, Counselor Smith-Galvin. Other members of the council? Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Chair Chines.
I'm not sure how I feel about that. That does sound weird.
Last time I was sitting in this chair was the eve of the election, and so I wanted to thank everyone in Wakefield for your support and allowing me to continue the honor and privilege of sitting in this seat for another three years. So, thank you to everyone who came out, and thank you for your support. And congratulations to my colleague, Counselor Butt, who will also continue on with us for three more years. And just again, a reminder that this Saturday morning is the curbside pickup. The pit is not open on Saturday, because you can just leave your yard waste bags curbside. Please do it Friday night, because pickups begin very early on Saturday morning. And with that, I wish everyone a Happy Mother's Day, and I'll see everyone in two weeks. Thank you.
Counselor Dennehy?
I want to congratulate Counselor Dombrowski and Counselor Butt for their reelection, and thank you, Counselor Butt, for your leadership that you showed this past year. And I'm sure that Chair Chines has a lot to live up to. Let's hope he, let's hope he's up for that challenge. I think he is. And also want to remind everybody that Monday night is town meeting, so please be sure to attend. At Galvin Middle School at 7, is it 7:00 p.m.?
7:00 p.m.
7:00 p.m. So, important to be there and to have your voice heard, so that that's when it really makes a difference, is when you can vote.
Chair, Mayor of, Mayor of the Butt?
Yeah, just, just to echo what Chair, what Counselor Dombrowski said, happy to be here for another three years. Continue my perfect meeting record. I'm going to go for a full nine years of not missing a meeting. And just to echo what Counselor Dennehy said, and to correct Counselor Dombrowski, we will not see each other in two weeks. We will see each other next week on Monday at town meeting. Everyone, come to town meeting. You'll see our amazing books put together by Cherry and Steve.
Mainly Cherry.
Mainly Cherry. All credit goes to Cherry. Thank you so much. But town meeting, one person, one vote, Monday, starting at 7:00 p.m. at the Galvin Middle School. So, just remember, we are back to Monday for this town council, the town meeting, and I hope to see everyone there.
Yep, Counselor Dennehy?
And just that there, it could extend into Thursday night, so if there's any plans that have to be made, know that that might be an extension day.
Great. Mr. Mayo, Mr. Mullen, Ms. Dalton, any comments?
I just want everybody to know, I'm not even going to try the tongue twister. I'm going to refer to our new chair as C squared.
Thank you.
Steve, Cherry?
Do you have anything, Cherry?
No, not that thing.
Okay. The Wakefield High School graduation is coming up, probably June 7th. When is it, June? Well, it's the first week of June, around there. And it has been a tradition that the council does give a congratulatory ad in the item supplement that they put out. So, I think that's okay with everybody. We'll do another one this year. We'll just change the, change the year and change the names, or rearrange the names. The names are the same as last year, rearrange them. So, okay, we'll take care of that
Great, thank you.
from our office. Thank you. The only other two things I have is I do want to thank Maureen for a wonderful year of chair. I'm going to miss you on Wednesday mornings. I'm going to miss the lattes. She does bring a latte every now and then, Jonathan.
I'm going to have to learn your order.
You're going to have to learn my order? No. And a great year of chair, and you know, we get, in my position, you work with the chair a lot, and you talk about a lot of things. So, when, when the chair leaves, and I have a new one, and then the chair's happy enough to talk to me, usually for two or three weeks, and Julie's, and Julie's, it was like two months before she talked to me again. But that, that's, that's, that's okay. But it was a great year, Maureen, and I thank you very much for working with you, your support. And to Jonathan and to Mike, please let us know what times are good for you, because it's our job to adapt to your schedules. If you want to meet weekly, we can, we can meet weekly every other week. If the phone is better, Zoom is better. It's really whatever works. I mean, there'll be constant stuff, but there might be a time that we do weekly or whatever. We'll, we'll figure that out, Cherry and I, with you in the next few days. But we look forward to a great year. We certainly have a lot of work to do, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Cherry, anything?
No, I'm all set.
All right. Well, just two things to add. I did, my family and I did have-